Now you got the cheers theme song stuck in my head.
It's all mixed up. I'm sorry to contribute to that.
He's all mixed up.
Oh, that's okay. I put page numbers on them.
That's probably it's why he's very wise man.
That and it's like a really boring book that I have almost memorized, so.
Oh, there you go. So we ready?
I am so ready.
Okay. Welcome everyone to Iron County Commission Meeting, Monday, the fourteenth day of November, 2022. Welcome everyone, and we will start out with a prayer from Paul and a pledge from Sam.
Our Father in Heaven, as we gather this morning in this Iron County Commission Meeting, we express our gratitude for the wonderful circumstances we find ourselves in. We're grateful for this opportunity we have to govern ourselves in this matter. We're thankful for the opportunities Thou just bless us with each and every day. We're so very grateful for the moisture that we've received with these last few storms and the snowpack that's building in the mountains. We're so very thankful for that and for the goodness it brings to our land and in the way to sustain life and crops. We're thankful for our families and our loved ones and we express gratitude for them and we express gratitude for the citizens of this county. We pray a special blessing upon those in the county, any of those that are suffering with illness or hardship of any kind, that they'll be blessed and that we can be mindful of their needs. We are thankful for our county employees and first responders and pray that Thou be with them and bless them with safety as they go about their duties this week, that they can be effective and and be happy and and safe. We acknowledge thy hand in our lives, Father, and pray that the light of the Spirit will be with us in this this meeting as we deliberate deliberate the issues before us and we do so humbly and offer this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I'm the one doing it because since I can get out of the way. You'll stand and join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I have a motion on the minutes for 10:24, 2022?
I'll move for approval of the minutes of 10:24, 10, 10:24, 22.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor? Aye? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the claims?
I'll move to approve the claims. And those that would be from October 24th, 2022 to November 13th, 2022.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We will move on to our reports. John, do you want to go first? Okay.
Let me just. Come on. Okay. Well, I apologize in advance. I try to be quick with my departmental reports and today I'm going to take a little more time. So to start out with budget and staffing, as of August 31st, sixty-six percent of the year, Clerk was sixty-eight percent spent and elections was at forty-six percent spent. And of course, elections normally, kind of like Nicole, a lot of our money gets spent toward the end after we get invoiced. As far as staffing goes, I I I hope I can actually through this. They they responded, they responded incredibly to this crisis. They 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 stepped up. As of Friday, they had worked eighteen days in a row. They had taken, Jared pulled the call logs for me, they had taken sixteen hundred and ninety phone calls from October 28th to November 8th. And, you know, people were angry and upset and and nervous and and they were, they handled each call with with dignity and grace and and sometimes were called names. Most of the phone calls were upset that they hadn't received a by mail ballot. I I am just so incredibly grateful to them for their sacrifice and the amazing people that they are and I I can't show my appreciation enough for them. So I want to kind of jump into this and not take up too much time. What we what we had was a situation where ballots ended up being delayed. I have received letters from Pitney Bowes, Skymail and Car Printing, and I'll kind of show those and I'll make those available to the public as well. On September 19th, Iron County sent our database to Car Printing. On October 13th, the ballots are printed and the envelopes are stuffed, et cetera. October 14th, Skymail delivers the ballots to Pitney Bowes, and and I think that's kind of where our trouble began. We were we were dead in the water and we didn't even know it. On October 18th, that was the first day ballots could be mailed. October 24th, we'd gotten, we'd we'd gotten a few phone calls. People hadn't received their ballots and neither had we, so we started asking and and the letters kind of show the timeline. Carr reached out to Skymail and and everybody was given assurances that they were in fact in WIP. Between October 24th and 28th, the alarm continued to rise and they were continued to receive assurances. And yet, we learned later that they were not yet. They weren't in the postal stream and what they were doing is wandering around the Pitney Bowes machine. And and there's a lot of details I could go with, but that's that's sufficient to say that they they were commingled with other mail. They were not labeled as ballots and they were not given priority as they as they should have been. And what's worse is we didn't know about it until the 28th. Because we would have taken action sooner had we known. We kind of that's probably one of my biggest frustrations is we weren't made aware of of how serious our situation was until the 28th. On October 29th, some ballots hit mailboxes. Unfortunately, no one could tell us how many. To this day, we still have no idea exactly how many made it because of the tracking had broken down. On November 1st, there was a mislabeled pallet. It arrived at the Salt Lake City Post Office and was rejected. And we'll talk about why in just a sec. And on November 3rd, that same pallet arrived at the Salt Lake Post Office again. It was with another pallet. It was, its label showed Jersey Mike's mailers from Nebraska. Yeah. And the.
So initially, we thought it went to Texas and then San Diego and then Nebraska.
Yes, and and so we had heard the 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 Dallas thing from a an employee on the floor at Pitney Bowes, whom the post office happened to have their personal cell number. And then as they started to look at individual intelligent mail barcodes, they found that some went through Florida, some went through San Diego, and actually, the Florida and San Diego ones were the first ones to really arrive. It was just ridiculous. And then let's see. Oh, and and the Postal Service has pictures of that November 11th ballot. And they were expedited upon discovery. It just so happened that a postal service worker cut into the that ballot and there that pallet and said, oh, this is ballots. And those mailboxes, those ballots that were discovered on November 3rd hit mailboxes on Saturday, the 5th and Monday, the 7th, which is just, that's the day before the election. And it still is not all the ballots.
I've been told that a lot of them haven't, people haven't gotten theirs.
So so this is the pallet in question and first of all, I didn't know this, but in the postal system, they have specific, they have postal ballots and they're made out of plastic or pallets, excuse me. Pallets and ballots. They they have, the pallets for the postal system are made out of plastic and this is just a wooden pallet. What, and I'm grateful for I believe his name is Alfie Charles at Pitney Bowes had kind of laid it out for me, but I guess this original pallet that had ballots had tipped over and then this was a reassembled pallet on a wooden pallet and and it was, it was sent on November 1st or delivered by a company named SIA, which is a logistics company. And they they do work for Pitney Bowes. So this was, I believe, sixteen trays of Cedar City ballots, four trays of Perrone ballots and like eight trays of Carbon County ballots. We were, our our problem was also combined with Carbon County. So what we did, we we realized, once we realized what kind of trouble we were in, we actually, we extended early voting. And you can do that by law when you do an emergency notice, which is why if you receive those notices, you received four of them and I apologize. But each one of those allowed me to extend out the early voting a little bit more as we were able to get more staff. So we did early voting at the courthouse every day, Saturday, Sunday, every single day from October 28th to November 8th. We did early voting at Cedar as much as staffing allowed. Basically every day at Cedar from November 1st through Election Day, except Sunday and November 2nd, except Sunday at Enoch. And I I just, I want to and and I can't go very far down this road because there's too many people to thank, but but my poll workers really stepped up and and, you know, they're they're incredible. And then I, my my friend, my my friend and colleague Carla Johnson sent, you know, backup printers and toner for me, ballot stock. She sent, she actually sent two of her poll workers on Saturday and they worked that, which was the busiest day at the Cedar Vote Center. And and they were Kane County poll workers. I'm I'm just, I'm just so grateful. And and she's not here, so I won't get murdered. But Carolyn Jones, this is her fiftieth year as a poll worker and we're going to recognize her. But she, she and her team stepped up and they worked so much. I'm grateful to Cedar City and Enoch City for for supporting us and letting us take over. I I missed, I displaced about three different meetings at Cedar. I thought Paul Bitman might injure me at some point, but he he hung with me. We also did what we called pop-up vote centers in Bryan Head, Summit, Canariville and Burl Junction. I'm grateful to everybody that supported with those, especially the community outreach because we were only able to do a few hours in each of those places, but we wanted to make sure people had the opportunity to vote. And so, you know, we had incredible turnout in Bryan Head, really good in Summit, Canariville and Burl. It was, it was good. One of the things that we realized was, you know, long before Utah went to vote by mail, we have this system called absentee ballots. And absentee ballots are are the same as by mail ballots, but it's for people who aren't able to get out and it's make, gives them the opportunity to vote. And and so what we tried to do, and we knew there was no way we would get to everyone, but what we tried to do is we put the word out and said, please tell us, tell us of any shut-ins that you know of that haven't received a ballot. And my deputy Jeannie, every single day would take ballots to people and drive them to their house. And it might not have been a lot on the grand total, but it meant a lot to those people and I'm grateful to her for that. And then the other incredible part of this was the outreach effort and and the help that we received. So like I mentioned, we had the emergency notices and it allowed for flexibility in in the early voting schedule. I'm grateful for everybody that that shared the many, many posts on social media. I'm grateful to the local radio stations who did PSAs and paid advertising. I'm grateful for Newsprint and Jeff's here today. I'm grateful for the, I'm not grateful to have been on the TV. I'm not, I'm not charismatic, I'm not handsome, but I but I but I, I'm grateful for the coverage that we received on TV. I'm grateful for Reverse 911. We we basically use the emergency Reverse 911 system to send out information on ballots. Also grateful to Commissioner Cousins. He put me in contact with oh, that might be the next page. It is. But he put me in contact with Greg Powell, who who coordinates for the Interfaith Alliance, so a lot of folks were able to hear it over the pulpit on Sunday. In fact, many, on the second Sunday we were open, came in to the courthouse and voted early because they had, they'd heard it at church and we were grateful for that. And the reason that was such a big deal is because it took pressure off of Election Day because by by the time we got to Election Night, our Election Night results, thank you. Sixty percent of the votes on Election Night, and I just want you to wrap your head around this, sixty percent of the votes on Election Night were in-person votes, and that's a county that's been vote by mail for six years. That's how much people turned out. That's how much people made an effort.
It's awesome.
One of the most poignant moments for me, there comes a point when I have to kind of leave it and come over here and and do the election part of it. As I was leaving the as I was leaving the Cedar Vote Center, there was a Vietnam veteran who was a double amputee. He's walking up with these arm braces. And he's voting. And I know that he would have otherwise received his absentee ballot in the mail. And that's how big of a deal it is. When I, when I sit down with my poll workers, every time we do training before every election, I tell them, you are defenders of democracy. This is a great big deal. Okay, moving on. Again, thanks to Commissioner Cousins and a gentleman named David Kyle. He, we did some paid text messages, which worked out really great and I think it hit a slightly different group than than what we had in this 911 database, which again casts that net a little bit wider. I'm grateful to Cedar City. They put some road signs up on the main corridors, you know, Burger Alley on 200 North and Main Street. We were preempted by the by the Children's Festival, but as soon as that was over, they changed the message on their signs. And then perhaps foolishly, the road department allowed me access to change the signs and I kept thinking I'm going to, my sixth grade comedy came up in my brain, but I didn't, I didn't do anything inappropriate. But I did, I did, I was able to change the message each day for for, you know, what was available that day and, you know, again, on on that Sunday night when we were here, it was either they'd heard it at church or they saw the road sign. And so that made a big difference. I can't say enough, oh, and we did direct email. That was effective. We, our municipal partners were terrific at every, at every level, you know. Paragona, they 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 actually have kind of a really tight Facebook page and Jane Stones took care of that. And Anana Brett Hauser took care of our pop-up vote center in Bryan Head and we had really amazing turnout. Rob Dotson in Enoch and and those folks were incredible to support us and then they put the information on their signs. You know, the school district was incredible. I, in fact, I didn't even know about this. My wife said, oh, here, here's a text from the school district. And they had actually made it like, because mine was like, I just typed it out and I, one of my vote centers, I put it starting at 1:00 AM because I was in a hurry and I, the school district had like, you know, graphics and had it all nice. And then Iron County, our website, our our web guys were just incredible. I mean, I I put, I put a lot of pressure on them. And they came through between the Reverse 911, the direct email, the the late night emergency notices on the website. And then finally, word of mouth. So as I mentioned, we had over sixty percent turnout. We're we're still tabulating just a very few things. We're down to provisionals. And it was actually in line with with most of the other counties turnout. Some were higher, some were lower and without the 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 ballot delay, we actually beat some of the other counties in turnout. And so that one, I I just give all credit to the citizens that take the time to vote. Our efforts were not a hundred percent successful. You know, we talked, I talked about absentee ballots. And there's no way we were able to get to every shut-in. And and that was one of the very difficult parts is that there was just no way we were going to be a hundred percent successful. But we did provide the opportunity to vote. Like I mentioned, sixty percent of Election Night votes cast were in person. And finally, it was a heroic effort by by so many and I'm grateful to see the community's support. Moving forward, we terminated our relationship with Car Printing and Skymail. Soon after the canvas, we will do an RFP, request for proposal. And I'm just going to speak for a second about Car Printing. Car Printing was started by Lloyd Carr, who's who's my contact, his grandfather in 1902. In 1905, Car Printing began supplying companies or counties with election supplies and have done ever since. Carr has since gotten smaller. They've actually started outsourcing to Skymail. And and part of the problem, Commissioner Cousins mentioned this, is this this idea of of, you know, you you get the outsourcing and you kind of lose the control. And I think that was one of the fundamental problems that happened here. That also means though Carr was the only, is the only printer in Utah that's election certified, which means we'll have to go out of state. Now, there are advantages with that. Most of the big print houses, in the conversations with my colleagues around the state that use different print houses, it's all in-house. It's all done in one place, the sorting, the printing and all that stuff, rather than kind of this this effort where they have to be moved around a little bit. And what happens is is they get them all the way ready and then they put them on a truck with a secure postal lock and then they drive them to Utah where they have to be mailed from. And then they are put in the mail. And so what would, what will likely happen is is we will be grouped in with, you know, there's there's Runbeck, there's ESNS, there's KNH, there's a few other large ones. And after we go through the RFP process, whichever one we end up with, we'll be lumped with that group of counties and our sorry, that's Kane County right there. She doesn't know I'm in commission meeting. We'll basically be lumped in with those counties and we have, we'll have one point of contact in terms of understanding the delivery, the deliverables, the progress of of our ballots. We are going to do a post-election analysis of the problem. Right now, we're still in the middle of it. We have our our customary We are going to do a post-election analysis of the problem, right now we're still in the middle of it, we have our, our customary post-election audit at 2:00 PM today, and that's gonna take up our time. But we're gonna look at what, what our solutions were, and what worked and what did not. And that's the end of my PowerPoint, but I just have two more things to say. One, I, I had a conversation earlier this morning with the Lieutenant Governor's Office, and you know, he, he said something very, which I thought was very kind under the circumstances, and, and that is, he says, you know, this is one of the worst-case scenarios. In fact, when we were talking about vote by mail back in two thousand sixteen, I thought, what, what if something like this happened, what would you do? And, and now, I, that's why I told him, I says, I have to, I had to live this. And he says, he says, yes, but you kind of gave us a blueprint for what to do in such a scenario. You know, we as the clerks and our deputies are sworn to uphold the Constitution. And this is a fundamental part of it. Like I say, those folks are the defenders of democracy. I, I stood before that group last year, and I, I said, you know, you guys really are my heroes for, for what you do. It's gotten harder to be a public servant, period, and it's gotten more difficult to be in elections. There's a lot of false conspiracies floating around, and we spend eighty percent of our time explaining stuff to people. But those guys, those guys are my heroes. And then finally, I did, in my, in my conversations with Pitney Bowes, I, I, early on, I, I asked them, I says, listen, we're gonna have a lot of overages. I don't think it's fair that my taxpayers should have to pay for our extra expenses for this election. And so they've committed to at least ten thousand dollars to help offset our, our, our extra expenses, and I actually think that will cover most of it. This Alfie Charles that I've worked with, I think he's committed to do more if necessary. And he's made the same commitment to Carbon County as well, so. Anyway, that's that in a nutshell. Any questions? Now that I've taken up half the time.
I've got a bunch of questions. So, and I was gonna maybe save this for my report, but I could go through it now.
Well, we're on elections now, you might as well.
I, I really want to thank everybody that's, that helped with through this, they were heroic, like you said, John, and we all appreciate it. I just, and John and I have disagreed, I, I've never liked mailing ballots. I like the old system where you call in and request a, an absentee ballot if you need one, and I think you should be given that for any reason. I'd, I've never liked the chain of custody where we lose that through the Postal Service, I like, and, and even if you request a mail-in ballot and vote, you can always drop in a vote, in a, in a drop box. So you have that chain of custody once you get the ballot to the county. I, I've talked to, we had a, we had a meeting with Senator Lee last, well, when was it, a week ago or a little more? With probably about forty elected, well, not all elected, but a good share of them were elected officials for a meeting, and and I spoke about this for a minute, and it seemed like the majority of that group wanted to go back to our old system. Voting in person with an ID. I've talked to, I've talked to Rex Ship, our representative, he's in favor of supporting that. I looked it up, and there was a House Bill thirty-six passed in two thousand twenty, where I believe the language, and I have to go back to confirm, but I believe the language used to say that vote by mail, you, it was, you, you may, but I think the language was, it was called the cleanup election bill, and it was, the language was changed to shall. You shall, and Senator Wyler was the sponsor in the, in the Senate. It was a woman that was in the, in the House, and I can't remember her name. I'd have to look that up. But it forced counties to go to vote by mail, everybody, so they were all consistent. So as I've talked to a lot of people, there's a lot of appetite to go back to, you know, and I can see both sides, the value of, of, of everybody receiving a mail-in ballot. I've expressed to John concerns, I know a property manager that every year, he manages some large apartment units, and every year he gets a stack of ballots that were floating around, that were mailed to students that moved over a year before. And I'm not sure that's healthy, to be mailing ballots out to hundreds, if not thousands, of people that have moved.
And to clarify, that isn't the county's problem, it's the people not telling them that they moved.
It's, and they do a good job, I know John's explained how they,
Really good job.
How they try to clean up the rolls every year, but it's not perfect, and it's very difficult, but that was a case in point for me that's that, you know, and, and, and granted, there are safety, there are safeguards in place with signature verification and things, but it's, it's still concerning to, to me. But, I mean, this, this is my question, how many total ballots were printed and mailed? John, do you know that number?
The, the initial was twenty-nine thousand and, just slightly over twenty-nine thousand.
Twenty-nine thousand. And then how many, do we know, can we tell just by the ballots that were received, how many of those ballots made it to, that made it back to you guys?
So we had right around nine thousand ballots returned.
That were mailed out, so we know that nine thousand made it to the mailboxes.
Yeah, at least nine thousand, and, and you and I kind of had this discussion via text, if you interpolate county turnout statewide and assume that we were the same, that doesn't really count the six thousand people that voted in person. But I mean, anywhere from fifteen to twenty thousand, you could interpolate made it, because not everybody voted. That's, but that's a, that's an educated guess.
So you think of nine thousand of the actual ballots were printed by, by the, by the Car Printing, went through Pitney Bowes, the nine thousand of them were actually to mailboxes?
Nine thousand made it back to Iron County. I'm, I'm saying the number is probably closer to twenty. Because it was fifteen when we talked earlier last week, but we've had more ballots be turned in, if you follow that same logic. In other words, if I receive one ballot back and, and turnout was fifty percent, I can assume that two ballots went out. That's, that's that extrapolation, but, and it's, that's very rough, because the other, the other factor is so many people turned out in person, that I'm not even sure how that would affect.
Yeah, I don't want to count those, I want to just count.
Yeah, but I, I don't know how many of those people received a ballot, you know what I mean?
You can't just, you can't determine the difference.
Well, I don't know how many of those people received a ballot and came anyway, or received a ballot after they came. But, but I know that I received nine thousand back. So, it's reasonable to assume that I was over twenty thousand, but again, one of the big frustrations is, is I haven't been able to give, get a concrete number from Pitney or Skymail or Carr or anybody, US Postal Service on how many were delivered.
That's my concern, you know, this whole process, is how can we trust? If we can't trust a ballot to get to us, how can we in good conscience feel good about mailing that ballot back, and ballot back and knowing it's gonna get to you? I mean, I know there's some tracking things in, in place, but.
Well, I can, I can, I can answer that one quickly, and that is that most people who get the ballot on a normal election, mail it and get it back to us, first of all, you can track it yourself, you can go to vote.utah.gov and track it yourself, and second of all, we don't get a ton after Election Day that were lost in the mail. Again, ballots are to receive priority within the mail, to be segregated and identified, so that, those, is, is it perfect? No. But do we get that many? I mean, I get your concern, but we don't get that many that are, that are like, lost in the mail. The other thing is, is the driving factor is what is the cancellation stamp on the, on the thing? So if you mail it like five days before the election, but I don't get it until ten days after, it's still gonna count because we don't, it goes by the, by the cancellation stamp, not the date we've received it.
I mean, I'm, I, I've yet to receive my ballot.
Yeah.
And most people I talked to didn't.
Where were those? I mean, do we have any idea where those ballots are?
That's my concern, is where are these ballots?
I mean, they should eventually get to that person, maybe.
It depends on who you talk to, I, I've, I've visited with Pitney, I, the Postal Service, and I don't want to bite the hand that feeds us in terms of this Pitney, but they feel like Pitney may have pulled those back just because they don't want the PR of them getting there, because I don't think they've actually entered the postal stream. But I don't know.
And that's, that's my concern, we don't know.
Okay, but now, I, I'm gonna address that because.
Because maybe they were too late anyway.
The underlying sentiment right there is what I want to address. Because, yes, they're ballots, there's no way in hell they're gonna be counted. Ever. Why? Lots of reasons. One, it's the wrong election, the election's over, it's too late to turn them in. Two, every ballot, one of the things that happens when you, when we produce a, a database is that we create what's called an absentee ID, and it's specific not just to that voter, but to that person's ballot. So unless we get it back signed by that person in time, it's never gonna count. We don't want ballots floating around. But the, the, the principle behind, you know, two thousand mules, or the, the idea of.
I've never watched that show.
But the idea behind that one was, is that it was like ballot stuffing, or the idea behind a, like a property manager, you know, say you had an unscrupulous property manager that wanted to try and do that, well, we'd probably have him arrested, because we'd catch him. And so, the, the, I'm not saying it's perfect, but the security's in place, like, those, those kind of problems, we have answers for. Sorry, go ahead.
And then you, you kind of addressed, how much did we spend making the election work without ballots, with, with the Reverse 911, with, with the robocalls? You think ten thousand, and, and so is Pitney Bowes kind of accepting?
Yeah.
A lot of the blame for this?
Yeah, um, let me.
And, and will the ten thousand dollars cover our taxpayers?
Yes. So this is the letter from Pitney Bowes, and they kind of just, I asked them to kind of break it down, the short answer is yes. We spent, we spent about two thousand on the, on the direct text, about two thousand, we spent exactly two thousand on paid advertising. We're gonna have extra mileage expenses, because I just, we had to do a lot of driving around. We, we had extra poll worker expense.
So it will be over.
I need to reimburse Kane County.
It will be over ten then?
I don't think so.
Oh, you don't, okay.
No, I, I, one of the things I need to talk with, and I just haven't had a chance, is to visit with Wade and kind of figure out like, the mileage, but Pitney kind of threw the ten thousand number out as a starting point.
Is Carr to blame for any of this? Did they, why, so there was a question, why they didn't ship them to Pitney Bowes in Salt Lake versus Vegas? Is there a question there?
So, the only thing I can lay at Carr's feet is the fact that they've, they've, they've been outsourcing for a few years, and, and I, I just discovered that their businesses, business has kind of shrunk, they actually, he sold his building and his renting part of it, and he's been outsourcing it to the Skymail company. Beyond that, no, Carr was blameless. One of the things that, one of the things that happened was Carr and Skymail were both told, oh yeah, everything's just fine. When we started making phone calls on the eighteenth, not the eighteenth, the twentieth. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put you on pause just for a sec. So these are the letters that I received from each of the companies, there's Car Printing, Skymail, and Pitney. And, yeah, this, this will likely ruin Car Printing. And Lloyd is a dear friend, and it has given me no pleasure to go down this road with him.
Yeah, it's no fun.
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so we can assess our, our costs and then, and then make, make that hold of the taxpayer?
Yeah, that was one of the absolutes that, that I, I really kind of laid out to Pitney Bowes early on, is that, listen, you, you, you need to make our taxpayers whole. So, and, and consequently, that will also mean that Carr will get, he won't get any more business from us, but he will get paid for, they will get paid for this election.
Printing.
Yeah.
So we ended up with sixty percent voter turnout, what would have we gotten, you believe, with, if this would have worked?
It would have been higher, we have good voters in Iron County. Some of the counties had as high as sixty-eight, seventy-one percent turnout. Some were, I believe, in the fifty range, those numbers move a little bit as people get closer, as different counties get closer to their canvas. The canvas is the, that, when the, when the commissioners finally accept or not the election results. But we're, one of the things that I'm, I'm really proud of for Iron County is that we're, we're in line as far, as far as turnout goes. I think, I think we would have been higher. But we were in line with the rest of the state.
But it proves we had a decent turnout with in-person voting and, and to boot, a very last minute.
Yeah, it was an emergency situation, yeah.
Okay, and John, I'm not tacking you personally at all.
No, I, I don't feel that at all, thank you.
I just think that we've had a ton of people calling us and asking us these questions, and I think it's, to be fair to them, we need to, we need to dig into it and really get a a good idea, but as I've talked to people when they call and different things, most people I talked to are in favor of going back to somebody requesting a, an absentee ballot and, and it being granted for any reason. Doesn't matter what the reason, but they have to request it, that would prevent this blanket mailing of ballots, and, and whether there's any fraud or not, I don't know, but it would prevent ballots getting shipped to lots of people that have moved. That would clean that up, and most that I've talked to, including many elected in our county, and several legislators I've talked to, in fact, one that's probably gonna run a bill to look at reversing HB thirty-six.
Because it has to be done through the legislature.
Yeah, it's a legislative process.
Yeah, the mandate, the mandate was a legislative.
And so that's, just for the record, that's something I'm gonna be pushing for, is to go back to the old system where we, we go in with our neighbors, we vote, we show our ID and we vote. And those that want to request an absentee ballot for any reason, that's to be granted. And I don't know whether that's a every two years, every year, or what, but, you know, that'd have to be worked out. I know it's a heavy lift, I know that mail-in ballots are popular. I, I can see the benefits of them, I've, you know, it's, it's very.
Just worries you.
But it, but this, this process has, I think, shed light on the, the weaknesses of the system.
Well, I will push back, I, I, anecdotally, most of the people I talked to were not in, not adamant to make a change, they were upset that they hadn't received their ballot, by and large, and in fact, I had that conversation with Lieutenant Governor's Office this morning as well. I mean, I, and so, but I think that's a good thing to, go ahead and, I mean, that's what the legislature is there for, and and, and I know that Representative Lyman has ran that similar bill in the past, and I'm not necessarily in favor of it, but I'm not gonna fight you on it, I, I, I think you gotta do what you believe is right. And, and so, that's where we are, I, you know, in defense of vote by mail generally, it, it is more secure than most people can imagine. It is, it increases voter turnout and increases voter, what are the words I'm looking for, like, it ma, it makes for more informed voters. In, in the administration of it, it's, it, it, it gives us a lot more security, and it allows the, the ballots to kind of flow in over a period. It makes, it makes, it, it requires fewer staff. But if, if we were to go to the, you know, one of the things, I, I like vote by mail, but I am also kind of a social bug. And so I, I like the, you know, the polling place and all that and stuff. And so I, I get that, you know, a lot of the folks that, that had that sentiment, that's, that was like, I like, you know, I haven't done this forever, I was, I'm glad to have stood in line for a minute.
A lot of them said that to me too, this is kind of fun, we haven't done this for a while.
And having said all that, I don't believe that we have a, a problem in Iron County with election fraud, I don't, I never have.
No.
I think you guys do a great job.
Okay, well, I've left seventeen minutes for everybody else.
I'm gonna say one more thing.
Okay.
I just have to thank John so much, because he almost had a nervous breakdown. This, can you imagine the pressure of your whole county wondering what in the heck is going on? I mean, I really, really have to thank John and his staff, because they did a huge, great job of, of getting the word out and, and all of the different things, and I appreciate that so much, and I just want him to know when it first started to ravel and fall apart, he said, I'm gonna quit, and I'm like, no! No, you can't do it. We, we needed him to stay in there, and we really would have had a man on our hands if he wouldn't have said. Yeah, he said, I'm gonna resign. Anyway, I just want to tell John how much we appreciate everything that he did, because I think taking this terrible situation and turning it around was, was absolutely John that did that, so.
Thank you, that's very kind.
Okay, should we move along, and we will go to?
At this point, we'll be here till seven?
Yeah.
I'll do Cliff Notes real fast.
Jennifer.
All right, thank you and good morning. So, budget, we are currently under budget and don't foresee any current or anticipated budget concerns or issues for the remainder of this year. Since our last report, we have hired seven full-time positions and two part-time positions. We've had six internal promotions and transfers, and we are currently in the process of hiring and recruiting nine full-time positions. Turnover for January to November of two thousand twenty-two is fourteen point nine-two percent, or thirty-seven positions. Compared to the same timeframe in January of November of twenty-one, our turnover was fifteen point seven-three, or thirty-nine positions. We had our open enrollment for insurance last week, we had great turnout, and I just personally want to thank Betsy and Carrie for all the hard work that they put in for that. Our accident review board for the remainder of this year will be next week, and we'll close out all of the remaining accidents year-to-date. I'll be attending UAT convention next week, and I look forward to meet with all of the HR directors for other counties throughout the state. We've had some milestone anniversaries this quarter, celebrating five years is August Franklin, celebrating ten years, Sean Peterson, at fifteen years, Bart Bishop, twenty years, Chelsea Boxwell. 20 years, Chelsea Boxwell. Renan Hewlett, Joe Peterson. And 25 years, Wade Lee. And if you have any questions. Just quick.
Thanks.
Thank you. Quick.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thanks Jennifer. We'll move to. Candace. Public defender.
And I have just a short report. I met with most of you, I think, during the budget meeting. Things are going well for our department. I've reported before that we were able to secure those additional public defender positions. That's been very popular, we well received. So those positions or that idea has continued to, to work well. I met with the judges last week. They, you know, expressed how much they enjoy that and how well they seem to find it working for them. So that's going well. And I reported that I met with some of you over budget. My office is tasked with the. Job of having to account and handle the reimbursements for what's called contested adoptions. That's not anything unique or specific to public defense, but it's just landed on our plate. It's given my office a little bit of a headache. We've had a difficult time back budgeting that and working. It's a, it's a third-party contract essentially and it's kind of get, and we. We also have to, you know, seek out the reimbursement from the IDC. And making sure all of that budget and the invoices are intact. It, it takes a lot of hours and it has taken a lot of hours. Hopefully going forward in the next quarter, it won't take as much, but those, those things just pop up. We, we can't avoid it. We can't predict them. We just have to take those cases and, and handle it. But I will just say that's kind of been a lot of our focus of our office in the last couple of months. But we don't have any concerns, you know, that we've, other than, other than that concern, I guess. So things are going well. Any questions?
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
I guess George is not here? Where is George?
He's not on the list.
George, oh, George isn't on the list.
Oh, emergency. I have it on this other one. Maybe it was on the other one that I had. Okay, um, we'll go to Fleet.
Yeah, you had an earlier draft and George, George had asked to be excused.
Okay.
I forgot about that.
We just normally wouldn't have made a deal of it.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Morning.
It won't be too long either. So as far as budget, we're under budget overall and we don't foresee any. Anything going over. We've got. Vehicles that we've received this year. So we received our order from 2021.
Finally.
Excluding the diesels that were canceled. So we're, we're almost back on track. We have orders in for next year already. I had to make some of those orders already before the, they were approved, but we're, we're not. Bound to buy any of those vehicles. Because of the shortages, they says, you know, if you put them in, we'll, we'll sell them anyway. So you're not bound to buy any of them, which is kind of a nice security, but we're going to, we're going to need them. We've ordered some crossovers, some, some F-150s. And then today, the order bank for the diesels opens with Ford. They're the only ones we can get. So I've submitted that order. We'll see if they stick with it or hopefully they'll cancel it again. And most of those are for the road department. See, the roof in the shop, it's pretty much been repaired. There's been a couple of small leaks that have come back, but. Jamie's come by. He's been really good to, to come back and fix that, but.
If you didn't have major leaks through these storms, he did a good job.
Really good job. I was surprised.
These, these metal, I, for life of me, at my shop or my son's shop, I can't, we can't keep that thing from.
It's only been, it's only been one spot around the, the bend and the welding bay, so I need, he came and fixed it.
We've had some, that one rain we had was, it was hard.
Oh, yeah.
Was, it was.
He did, he did a really great job, so.
Leaks that appeared, but we never knew.
Uh, we received our tire machine, so we've been changing a lot of tires and repairing a lot of tires.
We're beneficiary of that in the attorney's office, so thanks.
Well, and on that, Wade called me and, and they need a, they've got a hand me down from Cedar City.
Tire balancer.
One of those drug deals, one of Bruce Anderson's drug deals.
Something like that.
We've got a tire machine, a balancer, but they, and they need a new one. And I, I, Wade, and just a shout out to Wade and his, his, and, and.
Cade.
Cade. They're doing a great job for our county and, and saving us a lot of money with repairs that they're doing in-house and, and so. I, I mean, I don't know about the other commissioners, but I told him we, we need to get him the equipment he needs and told him to look into a tire balancer.
We'll keep looking, see if we can find.
They're having a hard time keeping it calibrated and working properly, so.
As far as maintenance repairs go, so we've serviced and repaired over 250 vehicles since we started the in-house stuff. Vehicle sales. So we've sold around seven Fleet, nine snowmobiles, two Gamma Goats for the search and rescue. I can't remember what the, the fire, there was nine or 10 vehicles for the fire that we surplus and got those gone, but we still have 20, have 20 vehicles ready to go on the auction. It's just time consuming and I'm so busy that I'm trying to get all those on there. I'm going to get those on there before the end of the year. And then we'll have a few more today to get approved on, on the agenda, so. Other than that, do you guys have any other, any questions?
Great job. Thanks Wade.
Thanks Wade.
I just want to give a shout out to John too. Thank you for your hard work and dedication and your integrity and appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, go to extension Kathy.
Good morning.
Morning.
So just a quick question. Would you like the five-minute version or the 10-minute version?
Five minutes probably fine, unless there's something very important.
I do have a slide presentation, but that will take a little bit more time. Or we can go with the slide presentation and you can read what's in your folder later.
Let's do that.
Okay, let's do that. All right. Am I able to get in here, John?
While you're bringing that up, let's talk about your shed that you need for storage real quick.
So I.
Have you talked to Lester, I think?
Yes, and he was under the impression that. So it's halfway down the presentation.
No, okay, go ahead.
He was under the impression that you'd made a decision.
Slip over the, the.
He was under the impression that, I didn't know that you had met with him prior to me coming in for the budget hearing. And he just basically said, he thought the decision was made. And I said, well. Anyway, we're going to get concrete poured. He said he'll get the concrete poured. A final decision has not been made on which type of building to purchase. He's in favor of a coast-to-coast, which is a metal building. As opposed to one of the other type of sheds that can be put together. He says that. Thank you.
I think we talked as a commission about putting on skids so that eventually we could move it if we needed to, didn't we?
We talked about, my concern with the, that coast-to-coast building is, and it's, those are nice. I've seen them. But if you bolt, you're, you're not going to have any guarantees of water running underneath that building. Is that going to be an issue? If water seeps through, because I don't know if there's a way to seal that well.
Yeah, and I told him that was one of my major concerns is not having a floor being right on the concrete. So I don't, I don't know that we can guarantee that things in there won't get wet on the floor.
And that's one thing, the advantage of a, like a tough shed or something that we put on stilts and have a stair, set of stairs up to it.
Right.
Or, or just a skid, you know, that you just step up in even, even with that much. That, that's what we kind of talked about it in the end, I think.
Okay, as long as there can be a floor in there. I don't, I don't know what they offer. He seems to be more up to speed on that one. That's not one of the companies.
We just needed to get somebody to build it on site because we wouldn't be able to move it in there because of the connects, so.
Right.
But. That way it'll give you your wind.
Yes.
To take care of that wind there. You can use that patio, you know, I, I, we talked about a lot of different scenarios of what we could do. But in the end, I think we thought that that would probably be the, you know, do we build on the building? You know, for right now, just for storage, we thought that would probably be the best thing is just to have them build a, something on skid. So that eventually we could either move it or use it somewhere else, you know, as a county.
Would you like me to pass that on to him then?
Don't you think, yeah.
Okay.
I'll follow up with him too, just to make sure that.
Yeah, that's, that's Mike's department, so.
Okay, all right, I will do that.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate that. As far as our budget for this year, we also are coming in under budget. I think everyone else in the county's had issues with going over with fuel costs and we're no exception. But overall, we should have a really good budget year. It's going to be ending soon. I, I do want to introduce you to part of our new staff that you have not probably met yet and. Not everybody was able to be here. Want to excuse Randall and Candace. They have other commitments this morning. But I'd like these people to come up to the microphone and just quickly introduce yourself and what your program area is, if you would, please.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Jessica Anderson and I'm the new 4H coordinator and I was hired on about a month ago.
Oh, nice.
Welcome.
Katie Wagner, I'm the new staff assistant. I've been here for about three months.
I'm Sarah DeBrinsky. I'm the coordinator for youth service learning and I've been on for about, almost a year in January.
Hi, I'm Marla Hoyt and I'm the 4H STEM coordinator, about a year also.
Awesome.
Great.
Oh, one more.
I was here last year, so. I'm Jamie Joseph. I'm staff program assistant. I've been working for extension for about four years now.
Nice.
Jamie's the one that's been holding the office together when we lose people in between.
Yelling in and, well, thank you.
So she's been invaluable with that. I think that one of the things that I'm the most proud of is what I consider human capital, return on investment. Because we have these staff here. We have 10 4H mentoring and after-school staff, two nutrition ambassadors. And then we have three full-time faculty in our office. And we're out doing public service and programming and we're always changing. This is the first time you've probably known that we did a lot with STEM education for youth. The youth service learning, Paul helped us bring that about a few years, two years ago. And it's been great to have that asset too, but. Okay, where do I need to point?
Oh, it's the down button and you don't, shouldn't have to point. There you go.
There we go, okay. So. Did want to make you aware that Randall Violet, who's been with us for two years now. Received an offer of a lifetime for him to return to Wyoming in extension. And to be closer to a couple of his grandsons. So he will be leaving us the end of this month. But there are also other vacancies throughout the state for extension faculty positions in Ag and Natural Resources. So administration will not be taking a look at that position until the first of the year. So we'll be without somebody for about, it might be until February. So if John resigns, he can come and work for us. Is that pressure?
That would be fun.
Okay.
Oh, boy.
This is last year's presentation.
Did I pull up the wrong one?
I probably pointed you in the wrong direction. Isn't that right? That's not the picture you had.
That's a big loss to lose Randall. I mean, we were just getting to know him well and see how much, you know. Benefit he has given to the county and I, I'm pretty sad that he's leaving.
Yeah, he's, that'll be a loss.
He was really good, yeah.
The thing about Randall is that he loves research.
Yeah.
So.
It was the same with Chad. When we lost Chad, he, he's really been involved with research and a lot of.
How about that one? I bet that's it.
That should be it. You have good eyes.
Barely. They're getting worse.
That's it. That's it.
Okay, let's do. Now I got to swap you back out.
Okay.
We're sharing a port here with the mouse. Give it a shot.
All right. So. On this slide, it basically shows how Randall has chosen to use his time. One of the things that I will point out about Randall is he's not afraid to try something new. And he wanted to make himself known as a researcher. When he first started, he said, if I had a quarter for every time somebody says, well Chad, he used to do this, he would be rich.
Yeah.
And we still do bring up his name.
Oh, yeah.
But some things that Randall has introduced are a couple of new contests at the county fair with hay and wool. He's very proud of his warm grass trials. He said with global warming, we need to be looking at other ways to have our, our fields and, and crops out there. With the climate change that will survive. So those are his areas. He does have some good photos here of the county fair. He has his wool. This is the first year he did wool and then the hay. And some of his other trial work that he's been doing. Candace Shibley, she's been with us now, boy. I want to say 12 or 13 years. And she has made a huge impact in the county as far as her horticulture and water conservation go. I don't know of any other horticulture faculty in the state that has a demonstration street. And a subdivision that has gone in and that is one thing she's very proud of, but she has also been. See what happens. I'm not going to happen that. Anyway, she has done, she's a very hands-on person, loves research also. She has very good ability to calculate research impacts. She has, oops, that's, this, this virtual field day. Before everything turned into, back into more one-on-one and groups in person. She really rocked the virtual world and she's just finishing up a curriculum for Master Gardeners. That will be a live course with Utah State University Extension and we're really proud of that, that she's on that one. As far as I'm concerned, with family and consumer sciences. Couple of my main programs are in the nutrition area, Create Better Health and Food Preservation and Safety. We call the, oh my gosh, I missed my, Create Better Health is what we call our program now. And our, our nutrition people that go out and do the education in the schools and in the, in the community are now called ambassadors. That's a new topic or a new thing that I'm kind of having a hard time getting used to saying. These numbers right, oh my gosh. John, what are you going to do with me? There we go. These are direct contacts that they've had throughout the year. The indirect contacts through social media, through farmers markets and things that don't have just a specific lesson. They have been amazing in what they've been able to accomplish in the last year. We have a English-speaking and Spanish-speaking nutrition ambassadors for, ambassador to do our programming. One of the things that was developed during COVID but has continued because it's, it's popular is this, oh my gosh. The, I think these buttons are connected or else I have a really big thumb. The virtual food preservation classes. There's a group of us that throughout the state, we offer these, they're live classes, but they are recorded so people can register for them. And then they can go back and, and review them. We record all of the, the chat, question and answers. And the participation this year alone has been over 600 people that just tune in. To learn about a cla- a class of something about dehydrating or it could be freeze drying. So I did bring you a sample of some.
Okay. Snack on those later.
I discourage people from coming in and using our freeze dryer for candy, but it's very popular. I do want to say though, that we've had people come in and we've had them do over 140 pounds. a hundred and forty pounds of fresh produce or meats, ground beef that's pre-cooked and freeze dried that, and, uh, I charge five dollars a batch, which gives them about a gallon and a half of product, and that saves them, I charge five dollars for, for batch, but in, in the store, a gallon of product would be around twenty, twenty-five dollars, so they feel like it's a good investment, but I have had several people, including a few here in Perrin, go ahead and buy their own freeze dryers now, so I'm gonna probably be losing business here, but it's alright. Um, our 4H and Mentoring After-School Program is now in its twenty-seventh year, and the funding changes, but what doesn't change is the number of kids that are impacted by having a safe place to be after school with a, to have that sense of belonging and are able to get life skills, homework help, uh, learn leadership and team building. There's, this is a picture minus one person of the current staff, that doesn't show up on that picture, but up on the upper left, some of our middle school kids, elementary school kids, and this is just what we've been able to do in the last, like, six weeks with the recruiting. Overall, we'll have around seventy middle school kids and sixty elementary school kids after the first of the year, that's our plan. You've met some of the staff now, uh, these are some of the areas in the 4H area in youth development that we cover. Just in the last, um, few months, it's a new registration year that starts in, uh, October first, right Jamie? September first, see? I'm, I'm trying to get through the livestock show, but it's September first. Um, right now, we have two hundred participants and we expect that to grow, because last year we had over six hundred registered, and then we do the farm field days, last year was virtual, but this, this year we were able to do, do it in person and reach well over eight hundred youth in third grade, that was our target audience. Just a few highlight photos of 4H in action. We do not grow dinosaurs in 4H, but we do like them for activities, and we've got the parade, we had a trail scavenger hunt, some of the service that goes on at our residential homes, uh, smock legislature and the County Fair. So, just a brief summary of what we've done, there's, you have a, a page in your folder that shows the external funding that we've been able to bring into the county to operate our programs. We are fortunate to have the budget that we do and we sincerely appreciate the support of U3 as our Iron County Commission for our extension programs, the space that we have, the resources that you provide for us to get our, our work done, and then we try to build upon that and make it, uh, something that's very worthy to be here and make a difference in the lives of people here in the county, both youth and adults. Any questions or comments?
We appreciate the 4H and the Extension Office, it's just a great resource and we're gonna miss Randall, I don't know. I, I hope we can get someone very good, maybe a young one that will stick around like Chad did for a lot of years, that would be nice.
That's right. Uh, our current Vice President for Extension loves to put people that have a PhD in county faculty positions, but people with PhDs.
Move along.
They like to move, so I don't know if I have any clout, but I'll be pushing for somebody younger too, that will stay around for a while.
Yep, yep.
So, alright.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Uh, Commission, do you wanna, okay, do a little quick, John, Mike, do you wanna stop?
I'm gonna go super quick. Um, uh, we did a tour with Building Zone Industries, uh, a couple of weeks ago, uh, the highlights of that, we were able to get some, uh, folks from Southwest Tech there as well as, uh, the Board of the Chamber of Commerce to make some introductions there, uh, and there, there, there's actually been a couple of really cool things that came out of that and with those introductions. Uh, we've met with the owners and representatives of a proposed jail site several times, uh, also met with Rob Cottle along with those folks, uh, to get, to kind of figure out a proposed site for the jail, uh, we should be getting that ready to move to, uh, the Committee for consideration. That was at the request of the Committee, we met before, we've just, we've just about got all of those requests filled to come back to the Committee, so that should be happening pretty quick. Uh, we do have, uh, met with Restaurant Tax Board, we do have a vacancy on that board, Maria should be here today and she will, she'll have a proposition, we should be able to fill that board today. Um, we did the, uh, annual Holiday Cavalcade Parade with the Old Lady and the Shoe Float, which the, the Commission, uh, sponsors every year. Uh, this year was less painful, we found a younger person to drive the death trap. Uh, well, I did end up walking on the outside, not so much to wave to the children, but to say, "Hey, go left, go right," so you don't run over any clowns. Cause there are clowns and I hate the clowns. The clowns are unruly and you nearly run over the clowns every time, but, but we got through that without any incidents. Last year, the shoe broke down and had to be pushed. This year, we made sure that the shoe was tuned up prior to, to doing it. Um, just been doing some work with the Innovation Center at Southwest Tech, uh, with their, uh, lecture program and, and a couple of other things, uh, kind of hooking them up with some different, uh, resources in the community and it's been working really well. That's the quick version.
Okay.
I won't say much, I talked a lot. Went to Newcastle Town Hall this last week, um, was there with Rich Wilson, our, um, County Engineer, talking about flood issues, uh, he's, he's done an NRCS grant for some work down there, we're gonna work on that, uh, detention basin, dig that out again, we cleaned it out a, a year and a half ago and it filled back up with these last floods. It's just gonna be a continual maintenance thing, but it's, uh, something we visit about. While I was there, Search and Rescue was there and talked about some, uh, funding for the callouts they've had at the Canaraville Falls and there was some confusion, um, I, as far as Canaraville's donated money the last couple of years and, and I don't think Search and Rescue really understood how that was accounted for on our county books. I called Dan, Dan Jessen and he, he was gonna get with Search and Rescue and talk about that, cause I, and on their books, I don't think they show up, but there seemed to be some confusion.
Well, when we make a, when, when Canaraville makes that yearly donation, the, it, that money can't go into the 501(c)(3), it has to go to another government agency, so it goes into the Sheriff's Department, uh, Search and Rescue Budget. So, the, the money went into the Search and Rescue Budget and was used for Search and Rescue items, uh, they were looking for it to come into the 501(c)(3) portion and it didn't, so there just needs to be, needs to be some explanation there, but yeah.
They bought some snowmobiles with it.
Yeah, in government, you have to sometimes get creative with the financing because it, it, just the way that they allow us to do certain things.
Yeah.
That's, that's all I have, there's a lot of other stuff, but I'll let it go for today.
Well, we're close, um, I will say we had a public hearing for the landfill for the C and D, um, what was that, uh, on the first, and, uh, we, uh, went ahead and we'll pass that along to, uh, the construction people. Yeah, uh, we got our, um, uh, landfill, uh, up and, uh, re-permitted and, uh, Bruce, I wanna shout out for him because he, um, has been working on that ever since I come in, probably before I came into the Commission, so, uh, we finally got that done and we're changing it up a little bit, putting all of the material into one and it works a lot better to be able to do that, so, so I just wanna, uh, tell Bruce, thank you for, for all he's done with that. Um, we had a, uh, with the Road Department, we had a little discussion with, uh, uh, Forest Service and, uh, that was on the ninth and, uh, there's, there's one little stretch of road that, uh, goes out through Pinto and out and nobody has been doing it because nobody got paid for it, and so, uh, the Forest Service was supposed to be doing it, but of course they're pre, uh, pretty limited on their resources, so they, they were doing it, but only occasionally, so anyway, we're trying to work out a, an ability for the county to go ahead and do that because it goes up to the county line and then Washington County takes it over and, and it's a great road from there over, and it's, and it's a little embarrassing for the Iron County to come up to there and then it's this really crappy road and then it goes good, and we just felt like that Iron County should go ahead and take that over. We were just trying to figure out if we could get the, um, B and C road funds to, to pay for that so that we can get that additional three, it's only three miles, so, and I talked to a, a bunch of the different Commissioners about that and what they did, and I know Darren Bushman, um, from Paiute County said, "Because if we, um, maintain those roads as far as the RS2477 roads, it's a huge thing that we maintain those, whether you get paid for them or not," and he, he maintains a lot of them that they don't, don't get paid for because he feels like those are ones that we can keep open and we'll never, you know, they won't be able to close them, that it'll be a good thing for the county because that's a really crucial one, we do not want that one closed, I mean, it, it, it would be a bad thing for our county if they closed it, but. Um, I, I had a weed board meeting on the tenth, uh, we always appreciate Casey and all he does for the county with the weed board, it's a, it's a big deal, we just keep spraying and spraying and it seems like you never get caught up with it, but, but we, we, uh, they said that we did, um, Randall said that our county was one of the top counties for our weed, um, spraying, so appreciate that. Um, we will go ahead and have a little break, let's have about five minutes and then we'll come back, well, let's, let's go till ten thirty and then we'll come back and do our ten o'clock meeting, sorry, we went a little over on that. I'm gonna have to try those. Hey, how are you?
I think we've had a good civil discussion, it's just that.
Oh, isn't that so fun?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a really fun project.
I think I can't, I don't think it's, yeah. If somebody, if a roommate, if a roommate wanted to, if they knew what a signature was like.
You oughta come down and see.
Called it?
Handle that. We actually, so.
Say that again? Have a residential real estate.
I know, and I know, you've explained, and you've explained. You've explained that too. Hey, Lyman, how are you?
How are you?
Oh, okay. Search and Rescue understands the many issues, the question is, is it going to continue to donate each year because?
Well, and it's not a problem putting it through your account anyway, is it?
Oh, that's an interesting, I didn't know how. I mean, we've got it, we've got a Search and Rescue budget.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The question is, is that, I guess, like, three years, they donated like forty thousand dollars and they skipped a year and then they donated like ten thousand dollars, and so the question is, are they going to continue?
That wasn't me, that's probably a virus, but don't claim it.
But that wasn't me.
It'd be nice to do a line item and do the same every year, so you know what it is. I know I've talked, been in several meetings and they say, "Well, everybody is." Are we off white?
Sorry, no. Too many people talking to me. I voted.
You.
Lot as a legal lot accesses the rail and they'll bring a rail in off and have four independent pieces of seventeen hundred foot section of rail that will have a road alongside of them so that they can load stuff on and off of the rail onto trucks. The interesting part about this project is that because it's a subdivision, of course, it requires the infrastructure improvements and in industrial, a paved road is required with dedication along the north side of this property. What we've agreed to and would propose for approval today is a variation on that standard, that we not require the asphalt pavement along just that portion, but have worked out with the applicant that they will chip seal, they will improve the road to a good road standard, chip seal it not only along that property, but also offsite out to the rail. And then the county has agreed and we've talked with Rich and Bruce and agreed that the county would then chip seal from Iron Springs Road over to the rail and then the company would chip from the rail over around onto their property. And that would give a good road and provide access on a good chip seal road for that purpose.
Reed would chip seal road hold up to that much heavy traffic?
We're concerned about that truck traffic and that's what we talked with Rich and Bruce about and they felt like as long as we get the base right, then it'll be fine. We have a lot of roads like that in the county.
But just one layer will hold up.
Be sufficient.
Two layers.
It'd be two layers.
Two layers of chip seal, okay.
Which it'll have a lot on it, but it won't be a lot of other traffic, not like Iron Springs where it has all the traffic too.
That's correct. And as part of this project and review by the planning commission, they approved a conditional use permit for this general industrial use contingent upon this preliminary plat being approved. And in that conditional permit review, we talked about the amount of traffic that they would have and the types of things that they would be coming, having come and going. And they're looking at about forty, to start with in their first year, they were looking at about twenty trucks a day and then they would go up to fifty trucks over a five-year period. And so that would be their maximum production on that system. And we felt like that kind of traffic could, at least the experts, Bruce and Rich felt like that this, they could do that with chip seal road that would be sufficient and make it a good surface. So the other improvement requirements, when we look at a subdivision, of course, we're looking at, for an industrial zone, it has to be on central water. They talk about their fire suppression, the due street sign storm drainage, all of those things. They're complying with all of those things. The only provision would be that we do an exception or a variation on the road standard for the asphalt and do the chip seal road. They will be getting water from the Water Conservancy District, bringing it from Iron Springs Road so that have fire suppression water there. And so I think it'll be a good project and it's just making this a qualified lot for building.
All of that area out there has been platted for industrial. Oh, oh.
Zoned, zoned for industrial.
Uh huh. For years it's been that, right?
That's correct. This has been industrial zone property for, ever since we've had zoning in the county.
Yeah.
The one exception is that they rezoned some of that residential there, which I don't know what the rationale for some of those things were in the time.
That was before.
It was before our time.
Yeah.
And somebody wanted to build a house, so they rezoned it because you couldn't build a house in the industrial. There wasn't anything else there at the time, so I think it's just kind of what they thought maybe would be a long time for anything happened, but now it's starting to happen.
And it has been. And it has been. A lot of those houses have been there for years.
They won't have too much of a negative impact there, but that whole area is, and we've tried to preserve it since we've been around to maintain an area for this kind of industrial use. And so that's what.
Because of the rail.
Happened, because of the access to the rail.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's an important aspect of our community, so. Anyway, that's enough of introduction, I think.
Okay. Chair will call for a public hearing on number one. Anybody want to come up and talk to that?
I will.
Okay, will you state your name first and?
Clara Hart.
Pull that down so we can hear you. There you go.
Clara Hart.
Okay.
I live on sixty-four hundred west and right off Iron Springs Road. The traffic out there with what he's proposing is forty trucks in two, in several years, that road has got to have something done to it before you put all that truck traffic on between the refueling, the plygman manufacturers out there, biz manufacturers out there, miscellaneous, the garbage trucks. The average speed in the afternoon on that road is seventy miles an hour when it's going by that subdivision. Pulling out of the subdivision, you take your life in your hands. Not one of us wants to get.
Maybe we need to have a little bit more patrol, maybe? We got patrol out there, I know we do because our dog facility's out there.
Well, it's very dangerous for the people in the subdivision. The kids get on the buses off that road. And you know, general public, they don't see a flashing light and they don't stop. Second thing I've got going with my complaint is the side road there, the motorcycles, the side by sides and.
What are you talking about, the side road?
Right off Iron Springs Road, there's a, where they came down through.
Four wheeler type road?
And the motorcycles, the side by sides, and a lot of it's coming from three pigs. And I clocked one at a hundred and twenty the other day going down that dirt road and he pulled out in front of me.
Hmm.
Okay, I'm a very cautious driver when we go down there. But the other third thing is that road, Iron Springs Road, is so rutted, so uneven, it's scary, especially during the winter and the icy roads, because the ice gets in the pockets and it's not very good.
Okay.
That's my comment.
Okay.
Don't, let's not get somebody killed on that road before something's done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody else? Anyone else for the public hearing?
I'm Lynn Martinez. I live on sixty-three hundred. And yeah, there's just a lot of traffic on that road, just in the eight years that I've been there. My mom's owned the property for quite a bit longer, but in the eight years I've been there, a lot more traffic, a lot higher speeds, people are passing in the non-passing zones. Anybody could pull out at any time and get hit hard. All the trucks lining up for this project now start at the back end of my property and they just go right down towards the radio station, blocking the driveway, so I can't get out. And if I have to go out by the street side, if you're trying to pull out onto that busy highway between two big rigs, you are absolutely blind pulling out onto that road. So it's getting a little crazy.
Yeah, we may.
Diesel's sitting there parked, running, so and the wind's blowing, so I've got respiratory problems anyway, but I've got, you know, diesel coming in, J brakes going off. I mean, it's just, it's getting chaotic on that front corner, so. Those are my concerns.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else on the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and Reed, come back up.
As we review preliminary subdivision plats, of course, we recognize that these are administrative permit, that once an application is in compliance with the ordinance, they're entitled to approval and this application does comply with the ordinance. I'm still working with the engineer on getting some of the title work to the, some of the language corrected, so I don't have a sign, a plat signed here today, but we will have that for signature when we get the changes made. But in everything else, we've talked about all of the impacts and the issues and have addressed them and they're in conformance with all of the requirements of a subdivision. And this is just not a creation of any new lots, these are existing parcels, but they're just not legal. Lots of record eligible for a building permit because they were split through an agricultural split. And just for everyone's understanding, that means that you can divide property in Iron County without going through the subdivision process for agricultural purposes if lots are at least twenty acres, but then they're not eligible for a building permit until they come through the subdivision process and we take care of roads and water and sewer and all of the things that are necessary for building. So that's what we have in this situation. So they're buying the entire seventy-four acres, it has access on the rail and the purpose of doing that is to be able to build the transload station. So that's what they're waiting for is to start building, is for the lot to be eligible to get a building permit, and so that's what we're working on. So the only other consideration, unless there are any questions, is whether or not you feel like that the road to, from an asphalt to a chip seal and doing the offsite improvements clear over to the rail crossing and then having the county pick it up from there and take it to the Iron Springs Road would is a good compromise and a good solution.
If it gets broken up, are we gonna be on the hook to fix it?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask that.
Yes, it'll be on the maintenance.
It'll be, okay.
It'll be the county's road, on the county maintenance system, considering it having been brought up to county standard. The main portion of the road is, of course, the Aberdeen Hall Road, which is the one that went up to the old pit. And there's gravel now being extracted up there that they're hauling on a regular basis and that road has had haul, hauling on it for many, many years of heavy trucks and it's a good compacted road surface. From that, from the Iron Springs Road across railroad tracks and on up to the pit, their improvement requirement for the road structure is gonna come where it turns off of that road and goes east along Sage Hill Drive.
That road already got a good base?
The upper part, the rest of it does, the other one doesn't. They're gonna have to improve that section with a good base. And Rich and we've talked about that and they'll make sure that that's brought up to a good standard.
Yeah, the bases.
And Savage Services, who is the owner of the property and the applicant are aware of that and they believe that that's a good compromise because they'll depend on having a good road to be able to move their stuff. And so they recognize that that's an important component of this project.
And back to the comments on the quality of Iron Springs Road, we've talked about that for a lot of years, you know, when I was first elected, we were talking about that being about five million dollars to bring that up.
It's probably more now.
Yeah, it's probably double that now. And but probably maybe, well, some of our best chances of getting some money for that improvement is these offlets, if they start bringing Alton Coal and some of these minerals in and using that, we have a lot better chance of getting money to improve that, isn't that correct, Reed?
From the legislature and that.
That was the criteria for our application. We previously went to CIB and asked for five million dollars to do that road improvement. And CIB money, for those who are interested, is Community Impact Board, it's royalty money that come off of extraction and that money has to be, have some nexus to that in most cases, especially to getting grant funding, but even to get the loan. They give preference to projects that have a nexus to the extraction industry. And so where some of that royalty money comes from, and they kept saying, yeah, we can see the need for this, but tell us when they're coming. When Alton Coal is actually coming and you've got a contract and they're actually gonna build their transload station, then come back and ask us for money at that time. But right now, they didn't see the timing was.
Just for residents, they didn't want to do that.
And so those are the kind of things that when they come will help us qualify for some of those other funding resources to fix the road.
Absolutely.
So the, will the Gipson mine up the canyon, Russell Lim and those, will they be using this too?
They already do.
They, they, they're looking actually at building their own. They.
Right.
There's probably three different groups right now that are doing this very same thing.
Easy Eye Savage and then Russell out further out by Weckel, right?
Well, no, not that far out, just right actually behind the.
Right, right, the in of.
Right.
Nation Center.
And they have some property there on the north side of the Iron Springs Road that'll access the rail, that they hope to do that on, and then a facility across the street where they'll move all of their operations to that location. So we're gonna be seeing more of that kind of thing and the more we see, the better opportunity we have to.
To get funding.
To get funding for that from the state, but also, you know, how to, you know, consider how they can participate in that, recognizing that they're all gonna have a.
And the inland port, we, you know, will be a satellite, from satellite inland port. And I think that's going to help us down the road to be able to get that funding for that road. And being able to widen that road and put turn lanes and that will make it a lot safer. So it's, you know, it's coming, it's slow and, you know, we understand that, but by having these projects, it's going to help us get that funding for that road.
Yep.
So.
Any other questions?
Alrighty, so I guess I'll call for a motion, if that's what we're gonna do.
Making sure I've got my thoughts in order. I'll move for approval of the proposed preliminary subdivision, Cedar City Rail Terminal, one lot approximately seventy-four, seventy-four point one eight acres, located near sixty-seven hundred west in Cedar City, Utah. Note that the physical description is indicated in the agenda.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will just mention, if I might, that this is preliminary plat and so now they'll be able to go and get their construction drawings for the road and the improvements and that we can bond for, before we come back for final plat approval. So we'll make sure that we have the financial guarantees or the improvements have already been made before they get final plat approval. Okay?
Great.
John, I'm still on.
Oh, sorry. They switched you off.
Oh, maybe I'm not, okay. I'm sorry, I'm not until the next one after.
Yeah, we got one more. Yeah, we've got public comments.
Okay.
So. I didn't get, we didn't get any of these, any Reed stuff in our packet. Just, I mean, it's fine, we can.
I wonder, I know that we had a week last week.
I know, I get that. So, so don't worry about that, but yeah. We'll go ahead with public comments, three minute public time limit per speaker, per public comment. Things that are not on the agenda and no items related to Commissioner's role as Appeal Board and comments should be directed to the Commission, no attacks on others' character. Anyone with a public comment? No? Okay, we'll move on then. Let's go to three. Discussion and possible approval of a partial subdivision vacate and amended for lots six and seven, Block D, Green Meadow Acres, subdivision unit two, to combine into a single lot of six A. There's the, we'll turn it back over to Reed.
Thank you, this is as an amended plat. As you're aware, when all signatures, signatories of the portions to be amended are on the plat, doesn't require a public hearing. We do send letters to adjacent property owners so they've been notified and are aware of the proposal. This is existing subdivision of two lots, lot six and seven. Lot six had actually been divided, this is just out of Bryan Head on the west side between Bryan Head and the Dry Lakes Road. As you can see, it's all zoned R1 in this area and these are the lots right here. The lots have been kind of divided over time, so this is lot six and this is lot seven. And so there are actually three, or these two have the same parcel number, this one and this one, so there are three parcel numbers on the agenda for combining, but we're actually just combining the lot six and seven out of the subdivision to one single parcel. This is the kind of stuff we like seeing rather than dividing and little areas like that, it's really hard to build on. Lots are narrow and they're small and the topography is difficult. And so we see a lot more of these up in that area. So this is an administrative function that the amended plat has complied with the ordinance and it is, just requires, of course, we talked about that last time, you know, with state law changes, any adjustments to lots within a subdivision require an amended plat rather than doing a lot line adjustments. But since this is vacating a lot, we had to go through the amended plat anyway, so this is a partial vacate and amend of lot six and seven to have one new lot there. We've tried to be consistent in our numbering of these lots to have a new lot six A so that when someone sees that, they know that it's an amended lot from the original subdivision. And so those are the changes that are being made by the, by this, the engineer doing the plat. We have had recently a couple of new engineering companies start doing a couple of these and the correspondence, it's been a little difficult to get them on the pages, our locals that have been doing these for a while and, and so that's why we don't have a plat here to be signed either, because by the time we start it and do the advertising and do the letters to adjacent property owners, they commit to have those changes made, excuse me, but I still don't have it. So we'll just do it and then we'll get it signed as soon as we get the corrected version. So here we, this is just, excuse me, get a close up of lot six and seven as they existed on the plat and now we just want lot six A. That does not require a public hearing, but I don't know if there, you want to take comments if anybody is here from, from the public because they were notified whether there's anybody who wants to speak to it or not.
You didn't?
I haven't heard from anyone, but I don't know.
Is there anyone here?
Thank you, John.
About that? About agenda item number three? Doesn't look like it, so we're fine.
We usually get a call if there's a question about it because the letters we send out ask them to call us and just gives them notice of this meeting, but we haven't heard from anybody on it. So we're just simply looking for an approval of the, the partial amended subdivision plat as stated on the agenda.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll move to approve the partial subdivision vacate and amend for lot six and seven, Block D, Green Meadow Acres, subdivision unit two. This is to combine into a single lot, renumbered six A, located in the description as listed in the agenda.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes, we'll go on to number four. Discussion and possible approval of annexation proposal creating an island, a peninsula of unincorporated land, proposed annexation into Cedar City Corporation, approximately three point five six acres. Reed Erickson.
This is a process for which you have had several of these in the last several months. These, as we're, as you're aware now, the state law requires the county to agree to an annexation that leaves a peninsula or island of unannexed property. And there's a lot of confusion about that because people, as they annex out, and it looks like a peninsula, we're not talking about what they're annexing, we're talking about what's being left when they annex of unincorporated area. And so in this particular case, this is a property that is located just off of the north side of the Bowling Alley. There's a piece of property right here that is in the city and this is part of that property. And there was a little, there's, there's this little piece with a little jog that runs right here as well that's part of that parcel. You can see on the, on the subdivision pla, or the annexation plat, there's just a little tip right here and then the rest of this piece. That's what's being proposed, it was all sold together as a single, as one property, but for some reason, when they annexed that previously, they didn't follow along there and they just annexed straight across. It's just been that way for a long time, part of it was in the city and part of it was in the county. We don't do that kind of stuff anymore and this is trying to fix that. So as we evaluate a proposal like that and as you're aware of the annexation or the process, this just shows the quick math of how it qualifies as a, as a peninsula. So what you do is you measure around the perimeter of what's being left and if the opening where you can draw a line anywhere across from what's being annexed to what's already in the town is twenty-five percent or less, then it's a peninsula. And in this case, it's only nineteen percent, so it obviously is a peninsula. In that case, the state, or the state law requires that the county and the city both agree to the annexation. As we've talked about and been doing for the last several months is when we have a situation like this, the Commission asks for a recommendation from the Planning Commission as they review these, because we've established some criteria. This is the eligibility sheet or the sheet that we look at to review those. This is just kind of a summary of that, we look at whether the property is eligible to the annex, what roads and access issues there are, what services are being provided now and in the future to both what's being annexed and what's being left. The thing we're concerned about when these annexation occur and it leaves a peninsula or an island of unannexed property is how that property can be accessed, whether it now has to go through the new, the city to get to it, or whether it already has access through the county, what services are being provided into that area because of the annexation, whether there's greater opportunity and, you know, what hindrances there might be for that property to be able to continue to develop in the county versus in the city. And those are all of the things that we look at. Land use compatibility, whether there are annexation agreements that can be provided to help facilitate some future annexations and the city's hindrances to make sure that the rest of that gets annexed and we fill in all of these problem areas that we have so that we don't have these conflicts. Planning Commission recommended approval of this, recognizing that the remaining property can still be accessed the way it is now through the county without having to go into the city, that this was just a little tip that was left off of another piece, is better developed in the city with the remainder of that property, it's all under that same ownership currently, and so it made sense to go ahead and approve this annexation. There is no public hearing required or anything like that, just basically off of the Planning Commission's recommendation, you just take action to agree to approve the annexation or not.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
I would move to approve the annexation proposal creating an island or peninsula of unincorporated land, proposed annexation into Cedar City Corp., approximately three point five six acres, located at the north end of Cedar City, near Old Highway ninety-one.
Description.
The, the description is located in the agenda.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. What?
Oh, that was item number four, your next item is number six.
Oh, whoops.
Awesome, I feel like we're moving forward at an accelerated pace, that's wonderful.
Always a great thing. We had a rough week last week in the clerk's office, so just saying. Discussion about Buena Vista Acres subdivision on the non-maintained subdivision and would like to be making, made into a maintained road subdivision. Do we have Garrett here? Come on up.
Hello, I'm Garrett Beagles. I just need to talk to you guys about maybe doing something about the roads out there. Ever since Bridle Path has been getting a lot of building going on, it has really flooded out the bottom of our subdivision with the lack of the county cleaning up the bar ditches out there and maintaining like the ponds or whatever. And I feel that maybe we can do something about it. It's gotten so bad that if there was an emergency vehicle that needed to go down the road, they wouldn't be able to make it down it, they would get stuck, definitely. Fire truck, ambulance, so I feel that it's become a hazard now. So if there's anything we could do to maybe do something with those roads out there?
Okay, can we have Rich come up?
I would like to make a little bit of a correction on our agenda here. Rich suggested this and we left it because of how Mr. Beagles requested it, but I'm pretty sure we're talking about Mona Vista Acres, not Buena Vista. Is that correct? It's okay, I just, I just wanted to make that, clarify that, yeah, because I wrote the wrong, I wrote the wrong one.
On Iron Springs.
Actually, on sixty-seven hundred, where all these other proposals are.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah, Buena Vista's over on Highway fifty-six, yeah.
Sorry about that.
No, it's okay, it was my fault, I should have fixed it.
But yeah, I would just would like to see if we can't do something about that.
Okay, Rich, will you come up? Our engineer, he's kind of prepared something to talk about that.
Well, I saw it on the agenda and I came prepared to discuss it. We do allow roads to come into the county maintenance system, but they have to be brought to county standard in order to do that. There is a process by which they come into the county's maintenance system. A lot of times, previously to. A lot of times, previously to subdivisions being created, roads weren't taken seriously or as a high priority. They are now, we don't allow subdivisions to be developed until they have a county, a paved road basically. And what happens is that on those old subdivisions, they were sold based upon their improvements and other things. And those lot costs did not include road improvements. And so those roads, basically they get dedicated to the county, but we don't take them as a responsible part of our maintenance plan. Bruce can speak to that.
We do now, but back in the day when that, when those were built into subdivisions, we did not take those on. We do now, right?
Well, we actually require the.
Yeah, usually, depending on what it is. But a big subdivision like that, we would, we would.
It's just like.
Agree to.
It's just like the previous subdivision we discussed, which was the first one. The developer has to come in with a proposal of, and we require pavement. Because of the benefit to both the county and the developer, we agreed to do a chip seal there along the whole length instead of just having an island of pavement. And that's what that would have been on that Aberdeen or Sage Hill Road. There would have just been an island of pavement in front of that development as that's what they would have been required to do, but it didn't touch any other pavement or chip seal. So what I'm saying is we are happy to address the issues out there, but the community needs to come together and choose to approach the county to have those roads brought into the maintenance.
Problem with kids, everybody tries to contact the county, you guys don't answer your phones? Like if you call the county road right now, no one will answer. Try to leave a message, your messages are full. You can't get a hold of the county for anything, for the road department. Like you can try calling right now.
Clark, the clerk's office you can. The road department has had, been having an issue with their telephone. Did you, have you talked to IT? Hasn't been fixed yet, so we're sorry about that.
I haven't, I haven't received.
What point is that there's a hazard though? At what point does the county step in? Because if somebody's dying and an ambulance gets stuck and that person dies, that becomes a liability I feel on you guys. And second off, you can't look on a map anywhere that says those roads aren't county maintained. I've looked everywhere.
Yeah, we have a maintenance. Bruce, do you want to come up and address that?
Jonathan, can you find the county maintenance map?
It's just on the GIS.
So a good example of this would be Sunset out by Quichapah, that Sunset subdivision. The developer came in there and bladed the roads and chip sealed dirt. He didn't put any base under it and it looked good for a couple of years, but it fell apart and it got to be horrible, kind of like the roads you guys are dealing with.
But yours are dirt, right?
Did you, I sent pictures.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yes, right. And so what happened is people bought those lots at a lower price based on the developer not putting the correct amount of work into it. And so the subdivision out there came together and voted at least 50% plus one to bring that up to code. And that, but that was assessed to their taxes. And then we came in, we put it out to bid. A contractor came in, brought the base up correctly, chip sealed those roads and then we take them over from there.
So through the clerk's office, an assessment area, that's who you need to go through if you decide to do that, but.
A lot of the issue is you guys let the subdivision above us dump their water in our subdivision. There's no one, why aren't they having to hold their own water back?
Okay, Richard, can you?
I don't understand why they can dump, they brought their burrow ditches right to the edge of our subdivision and then they just feathered them out into nothing, which dumps them into our subdivision. Because when I first moved out there four years ago, I had very little water problems and it seems like just every house they add to the subdivision adds another three inches of water, two inches of water to the entirety of a road.
I don't have anything to speak to that, that was prior to my time and I just asked Reed if he knew anything about it. That subdivision was approved years ago.
Thirty years ago, I've lived out there my whole life.
Seventy-two.
And so.
But no, I'm talking about Bridle Path. Bridle Path was there thirty years ago and we were allowed, they allowed them to not finish the last of their roads or anything because they didn't want to take care of the road bordering the two subdivisions and then they just took all their excess water and dumped it to the end of that road on the last road and then just called it good. And it wasn't necessarily an issue until the last few years when we've had fourteen, fifteen new homes be put up in that neighborhood. You know, you clean out an acre and then no longer that water don't soak in.
Right.
And it runs down to my house and my daughters honestly can't even go to the bus stop. They, I have to wait after, I got to give them a ride to the bus stop, I have to come home, give them a ride home, it's just really difficult for everybody.
Yeah.
And everybody, I mean, I just, my taxes just went up too. I'm paying over $2,000 now a year in taxes for a road that's not maintained, that they don't plow. Trash trucks come out there and they go through the mud and they drag it up on the roads to make it even worse. You know, they don't help out the situation. The school bus that goes out there, they go through, they're doing twenty miles an hour hitting potholes and just blowing the water out of them, just making them worse.
Yeah, I know it's, I know it's a huge issue. And these subdivisions are really hard for the county to deal with because they were made before, they are, there is a right of way there, but we, they're not on our maintenance, they never were, that's the way that they were set up. And so.
This is the maintenance schedule.
Yeah.
Are what county maintained roads are. These are roads, but they're not on the maintenance schedule, so.
Where are you at? He's, no, he's.
I'm here, right here.
So you're kind of back.
Over half of that road is under six inches of water. And there's got to, I mean, like I said, there's got to be something, has to be done.
Reed, do you want to, oh, do you want to?
Every time we had a plate come through about every five years and smooth some of that out for us and it worked wonderful.
I know on my road alone, I've added 120 tons of material. So I mean, at one point, how much material do I have to add on that road before they'll take over? You know what I mean? I've added 120 tons.
It's chip sealed, it's being chip sealed. There'll be a base and chip seal. And then you wouldn't have the water standing on it because now they're all like holes, right?
Basically, we'll just never have the roads figured out.
Yeah, yeah.
Because no one's going to be able to pay for chip seal, I mean, everyone's so old out there and have no money.
Yeah, and I wondered about that too.
Well, we're all retired out there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Otherwise I'm out there because my dad lives out there and it's for my kids to be close to him and I can't even walk to his house during the winter.
Wow.
So I think what we need to do is I need to look at the drainage from above and the drainage in that area.
Yeah.
Take a look at the situation that's happening and then come back with a recommendation. Again, it is a difficult thing. Back when these subdivisions were approved, there were less, there was 20,000 people in the county. Now there's 50, so we're running against this wherever these previous subdivisions were approved all over the county. And you mentioned the tax base and I under.
A lot of money taxes.
So can I speak to one?
Yeah, yeah, let's have Bruce.
So right here on this road, on the corner of that road, there's two lots that are still owned by the developer and they're holes that were supposed to be for that drainage. I don't know if it's working now or what, but it was part of that drainage system on that subdivision.
So I have talked to the owner of the subdivision and he said when they turn the subdivision over that then you guys were supposed to take care of the bar ditches and the ponds. Now I don't know if that's true or not.
There are two ponds, there's.
One on each corner right in front of my house, yeah.
Right, there's two ponds there that still belong to him.
Come up.
Never sold, oh, sorry, they belong to that, the owner that did that subdivision, the lot still belonged to him. But I don't know, I never.
Unless he deeds the property to us, we are not in control.
But that's where the water used to go and I don't know if they're full or how that, like Rich said, that was before my time. I'm not sure the agreement they made with the county. There's got to be a record of that.
I wonder too if there's verbiage on the plat that might allow for the county to.
So we need to do some investigation, come back with a recommendation. Again, you know, the commissioners know, you know, costs are going up. If we were to take over just every road onto the maintenance schedule, everyone's taxes would go up some more, go up some more.
Yeah, I bet.
I don't know what it would be.
It would be a lot.
So what our goal is, and we're not trying to push you out of the way, our goal is to take on roads, but not until they become maintainable at a reasonable cost. So when we reach out, we get reached out to all the time about roads. And I have some documents I had actually brought because I wanted to give them to you.
Can you explain to him what that process is, that SID process where it attaches to your taxes? You don't have to come up with a huge amount all at once and it can be over the period.
Ten years.
Twenty, twenty years was Sunset, wasn't it?
Can you explain that?
Fifteen years.
Yeah, that process is a good one.
Able to explain that process.
Do you want to do that now?
Yeah, can we?
Under the state law, it's called an assessment area, which is a geographic area determined by those interested in participating to assess their properties for the value of what it costs to bring the roads up to county standard. And it's, without getting into the details, I'd be glad to sit down with you and go through that process. But essentially what the commissioner said, a majority of the people who are interested in having that done can sign up and the county would then get an estimate of the cost of what it would actually take to do that. We can do a general estimate, but in order to really determine, you need to do some core drilling and see what kind of base there is and stuff, what it would take to bring those up to county standard. At which point then we go through a formal process to create this area, assessment area. And then there's the option of people either just paying it off directly or having it spread out, depending on what kind of an interest rate we can get. We, the county would bond for that improvement amount, make the improvement on the property and then assess each property that amount over ten or fifteen years, depending on what everyone agrees to and what the interest rates are so that they can have that improvement, at which point the county can then take it over and maintain it. But it's a legal process provided through state law that allows the county to assess the properties for the improvement so that then they can be built and brought up to county standard. And we've, as mentioned, have done it throughout the county in a number of older subdivisions that just were never built to the county standard road.
How come we can't police then if those are self-maintained roads? How come we can't have somebody out there telling people that they have to maintain their section of the road? Because it's not fair for me that lives five houses in to have to maintain.
The rest of the road.
Twenty thousand dollars worth of road.
I know, I totally understand that, but there is no way to police that. I mean, and I hate to say that, but I don't know how you would ever, I mean, to be a good neighbor, it'd be nice if everybody would do their own.
They don't.
But they won't. And like you said, if it's an elderly person, they probably have no means to do that. So to be able to do an assessment area probably would be, are those one acre lots? Yeah, so that would be probably more of an appetite than like out to.
Sunset.
Sunset, they were twenty eight.
Seventeen thousand dollars.
Yeah, they were seventeen thousand, but the one acre lots wouldn't be that much because they were.
They were larger lots, so there was more road per person.
Yeah, yeah.
But it was significant.
But you could make a payment over time with the county, the county would help you do that.
Well, as I'd almost guarantee that nobody out there would go for it because like I said, they don't have the money. So we'll just wait and see when somebody gets stuck on that road and passes away from not being able to have the proper assistance, we'll see what happens.
And I don't know that we're liable for that because. Yeah, I get that, I get that. And, and you know, I've had people call and say, well, can't you just come and grade it? But the problem is it opens a can of worms because we have those all over the county. So if you did for one, they'd say, well, that's not fair if we, you know, didn't do all of them. And we have them, I mean, there's probably thousands of lots out in the borough area. I mean, of this exact same type of area, you know what I mean?
We're bringing a lot of businesses in our neighborhood and they're tearing up the road, but then the people that, I don't know, it just seems like you guys are willing to help the businesses but not the people that are paying the taxes.
Well, the businesses, the businesses are paying, you know.
What are they going to give you, 50 employees out there? Like, like how much, then how much money are we going to repair? Five million dollars for the road after they destroy it? Just crazy to me. Well, I appreciate everything, I'm sorry to take up all your guys' time.
All right, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to seven. Proposed 2023 OHV ATV jamboree to be held at the fairgrounds on September 27th through the 30th, 2023. And do we have Brody here and all? Yeah, come on up. State your name and.
My name is Brody Johnson. I am with the Cedar City Trailblazers OHV Club and I'm also the ATV representative for what was the state parks, but now the Office of Outdoor Recreation. So we're the ones that give you guys the grants for the OHV stuff, so. What we're proposing is an ATV jamboree at the Iron County Fairgrounds, this 27th through the 30th of September of next year and ongoing after that. The Chamber of Commerce recently did a off-road rally in August of this year. They bit off a little more than they could chew with that, but they got us started. And so what we're proposing is for the county to take it over since the chamber is not going to be doing it next year, to change the date, the location and the name of the jamboree. Most jamborees in our region, and we're talking Beaver, Sevier County, in Richfield, Penguich, things like that are run by the county, whether the county or the city that they're in or their tourism office through the county. The reason why is when it comes to approval for rides, that has to be approved by the Forest Service and the BLM or SITLA as the case may be. We don't really do a lot with SITLA here. But the county commission has more power to sway the Forest Service and the BLM over approval for rides as does versus an ordinary person or even an ATV club or even the state as a whole. So the county commissioners have more power over that. So the approval process would be run through the county. The actual organization would be run through the county, similar to how Beaver, Garfield, Sevier County and Paiute County does. And so, but again, we're just proposing that. We already have an identified sponsor that is willing to help out. That would be DNP, the Can-Am dealer in Cedar City. They have run some successful private jamborees, most recently at Bryce Canyon. They've had well over 250 to 300 riders come for four plus nights, all staying at the Bryce Canyon campground and motel. I do have to warn you that jamborees are not a money maker for the county. That's where the chamber bit off more than they can chew. They felt like they needed to make a lot of money. Jamborees don't make a lot of money.
But do we lose money? Because my understanding was the chamber lost a lot of money.
The chamber lost their pants, their shorts, their shoes, their shirts and their socks.
And that's, I mean, we don't want it to come to the county and lose money, we can't afford it either.
No, that's, and part of that is where, and I have Bill Bostrom here with who is the president of the Tusher Club in Beaver. He's also a member of the Paiute Trail Committee that oversees the Paiute Trail. Any of you ever ridden the Paiute Trail? So, is it nice?
Yeah, it is nice.
Pretty nice.
I mean, it's huge, I mean.
So, and Phil can talk, and if you're all right with it, I'm going to have Phil take a minute and talk about what the benefit, where the money comes from to run these jamborees.
I've been involved with the jamboree in Beaver for five years now. We missed one year with 2020, but we do not lose money. The county does not lose money, the county actually makes a small amount of money. But what you're getting is PR, which you can't buy without bringing people here. I don't know if you're familiar with the High Desert Trail, which will run border to border, that will bring people here. Basically, you get three pipes of people that come to this jamboree. You get the local people that live here, people within the state, and then you get the out of state people. I know from my experience with the Beaver Jamboree, we get a lot of calls into our tourism office, which they have my number and I bring people down from within the state, had people from Arkansas come. They come stay in our hotels, they buy our food, they buy our gas. The Paiute Trail, I'll speak on that, is, you've ridden the Paiute Trail, it covers four counties. We have about 165,000 riders a year with about 105,000 vehicles. We have about a hundred and sixty-five thousand riders a year with about a hundred and five thousand vehicles. Uh, we have seventy-five to eighty counters out, several cameras. All our data is published each year. I can get you a copy of that. Uh, it's estimated we bring thirty-five million dollars into that. You talked to, look at Marysville. If we didn't have the ATVs there, there isn't much. Uh, Mike Worthing has a nice system here, the Color Country, uh, trail system, which brings a lot of people in. We use that for our jamboree. I guided last year at that. No one club like we have here in Cedar City is big enough to run a jamboree, but we all help each other out. Brody and his father-in-law and a lot of people from the club come up to Beaver. I come down here. I guide in Panguich. I guide in Canab. I guide in Hurrican. We all work together. I think what you get when you do these jamborees, you get awareness of what's going on ATV wise. They come here, they see your hotels, they see your restaurants, they see where to ride. And that's what you get out of having a jamboree. You get PR, you get more TRT tax, you get more food tax. Uh, it's not a moneymaker to put it on to do it. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of volunteers. We don't get paid. But they're a lot of fun. If you've ever been to one to see other riders, you learn a lot from other people, you meet some neat people. And you get opportunities. I get calls from people, you wanna come ride in Panguich with us. That's what, what we're proposing, what I think it can do for the county. You have any questions, sir?
I do. Um. What can we do different other than making it logistically easier to deal with the BLM Forest Service and different entities?
Well, they don't, they don't charge us where they did.
Okay.
The chamber, they did charge. That's part of it.
What can we do different?
Agency to government agency when you do that.
Right. So what can we do different? That, that's a good point, but other than that, what can we do different than the chamber to at least break even on one of these events?
I have never seen the chamber's books. I would like to see how they spent their money. I do have a degree in economics, but I don't know what they did or how they lost some money. I know what we do in Beaver. I know what they do in Richfield. I know what they do in Panguich. But I don't know how they spent their money or how they allocated it or if they kinda advertised it.
I haven't seen that either. I asked him.
But I know what we do in Beaver and I know it doesn't cost, actually the club, I should say the club, the, uh, group that puts on the jamboree. We actually gave a thousand dollar scholarship to one of the seniors in the high school last year. So that was up. But the county basically, the thing the county brings us, you have the facility to do registration through that, collect the funds, and then some of the money you will buy things for things that we give away to attract people to come. But the county gives us somebody to run that. We have gone so far on Beaver the last year, we actually have an application on our phone that everybody at the jamboree has so we can get messages out to them. That also gives us come this year, everybody's phone, email address to send out to get more people to come. So once you get started, the first year is gonna be a little rough, but we did have one here last year. I guided. We had a lot of fun. I'm sorry.
Wasn't that a hundred and something?
The chamber started right off with how much can we make? And I was at one of the meetings and said, you're not gonna make it, same as I'm telling you. It's PR. Same with your vendors that come to these things. They're not gonna come and sell a ton of equipment, but they're getting the word out. I've talked to the gentleman from Ryfab. I said, you sell? He says, no. When you come to a jamboree, I've got the box in the back. I've got my windshield I want. But you see what is there. The next time I buy one, I bought a Ryfab box. So it's, it's for your vendors. You've got a, a company, one DNP to do it here, which knows how to do that stuff, which is a good thing. So.
So really you're talking about logistics and then, um, possibly like helping supply some of the prizes?
I think you're talking about logistics and you also have got, which the chamber didn't come to us, a group of people that are willing to help put it on, that'll put on other jamborees. Brody, his father-in-law is very active also in the, out of, um, Annabella. But you've got group people that know how to put one on. We're not starting from scratch like the Chamber of Commerce was. And we kinda know what's gonna happen and what you're gonna do and how to spend your money and not just go crazy.
So the concern I, I kinda start to have is I, I can see this falling on our tourism director's shoulders at some point.
No, we're gonna, we're actually gonna put it on the fair.
Okay. So one of the other.
Maria will be involved, but, but actually Susan.
I can feel the pressure like.
So I have a question. Um, so Chris McCormick reached out to me and said that he went to the Polaris dealership and sold him whatever he had left over. They are going to put one on, and so I guess that would be a private entity would put one on.
It would be a private entity, yes.
So will that interfere with what we would do?
And any private entity can do that. Uh, if, if, uh, this past weekend, I think it was this past weekend, the Polaris Can-Am dealer in Mesquite put on a ride. And as, as a group, as, as an, or a private company. Um, Jorgensen's Honda in Richfield does the same thing. Uh, Stedman's in Tuilla does the same thing. They'll do a ride. Might be a day, might be two days. They don't have any county involvement. They have preset rides that they might go on. And, and so, but at any one time, those type of jamborees can, or those type of events can fail because it is a private business.
What's the appetite for this? So if they come to a private one, are they gonna come to our county one? Uh, maybe they won't come to two.
That would be the hope. So for example, Tri-State, uh, has just recently started struggling with their jamboree. They were running it more private than anything. Uh, they would have upwards of seven hundred riders, seven hundred people coming and staying in their hotels in Washington County. Buying food, buying groceries, just like what Phil mentioned. Sevier County in Richfield at the Rocky Mountain Jamboree has around five hundred participants. Every one of those people just about is staying at, in a hotel for five, six, seven days. Add that up. And then when they come back, uh, later in the year, they come back with family and friends and they stay in the hotels too. They, they come back and spend money here. And then they bring their friends. And that's how the Paiute Trail is, is so big.
Snowballs.
It's snowballs. It does. So you have to start somewhere. Where the county also will come into effect is the insurance for the event. Most other, uh, jamborees, their, their jamborees are required to have some kind of an insurance. And Beaver, Sevier County, Garfield County do their insurance for the event through their act, uh, kinda like what the fairground insurance might be here for the, or other activities. They add it on to their, to that. So.
Yeah.
I presume that you, uh, require the participants to do an indemnity waiver?
Yes, they're, uh, they're required to sign, when they register, they obviously do that. So, and that would be a part of the registration, which the, the chamber created its own websites. And that might be where a lot of the cost came in. The website was never effective. The website always was asking people to, to become members of the Chamber of Commerce to, uh, apply to be a rider. And, uh, and so that, that turned off a lot of people, but even with that, they had just over one hundred riders for the very first one.
We can use our, just our Iron County.
Yes. Uh, Sevier County, uh, they, they all do their registration through their county websites or their tourism websites. So they found that it doesn't take a lot of time for their IT people to put that together. It's the, the, the infrastructure's already built with their websites. And a lot of counties are already set up to take payments online, so they add that to that. So, so if you go to Sevier County, you can, and sign up for the Richfield Jamboree, you sign up for your rides, you pay your fee. You get a printed, uh, they email you a receipt from the county and, and then you've got your list of rides. So very simple. It doesn't have to, it, it, sometimes private people try to make their websites way too big, way too cumbersome. And that tends to be a problem.
Could, could we have Susan and Maria come up and tell us their thoughts on this and what you think? If we can, if you think we could break even, make money, lose money, what do you, what's your thoughts?
If they're willing to do it.
And if I might add.
Take it on.
I might add, part of the, uh, jamboree i- is the, the events and the activities that go on after the rides. And so with, uh, with a sponsor, the sponsor takes care of quite a bit of that. They have the ability to bring funding in to help with that. They also help provide, i- if not all, a majority of the prizes that are given away. For example, Richfield gives away two, or they give away an ATV on the opening morning and they give away a side-by-side the closing evening. Uh, Beaver and, uh, Panguich give away four to five thousand dollars.
Have the girls just turn around.
So, yeah, there's, there's, so that.
But a lot of them don't give that big of prizes.
No, well, uh, Tri-State gives away a side-by-side. Uh, Fillmore has given away a large ATV trailer. Other places have given away ATVs. Uh, and you'll find that a lot of manufacturers, Polaris, Can-Am, Arctic Cats and Honda.
Will help with that.
Will, if you work well with them, will sometimes donate a machine to give away. Or they will sell the machine at a substantially lower price. And so there, there's, you know, there's things that having the, a vendor like DNP can, can be beneficial. They can work that part out. Not saying that as a, a, a Cedar's or an Iron County jamboree that would be giving away an ATV, but you gotta give something away.
Yeah, we, oh yeah, prizes.
And I have to say, my wife has won a machine at one of these before and it was kinda cool. It was kinda fun.
Oh, that's kinda fun. Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Come on up.
So we're, we're doing some quick logistics, talking about a lot of things with what you folks have brought out. I'm the fair director with the fairgrounds. And so when Marilyn first proposed this, first it was another facility that was being proposed and I says, what?
It was initially Diamond Z.
Yeah.
But.
And here we are, right next door. Yeah, right next door. We have the parking, you know, certainly we have a building, um, several buildings now. So we do have the facility. We, we could, um, I've already started talking to some food vendors and stuff like this. So I've already started kind of feeling things out that way. Um, probably our main concern here is, you know, like if they wanted to, uh, bring in their own, um, trailers. Uh, and, you know, we have a brand new.
RV park.
In a facility that can actually work for us that way. Uh, we're very limited on what we can do that way, although I do know some fairgrounds are set up to do it that way. And maybe that's something we'll look at in the future. But, um, as it is, we're kind of limited with that. We only can hook up probably up to twenty and stuff, so.
Most, most people would be staying in hotels.
Yeah.
Uh, the reason why is after a day of riding, you wanna take a shower. You, you don't wanna have to.
Get in a cubicle?
Yeah, you don't wanna have to get into your little trailer. There are some that will do that. But I would think that a majority would stay in, in, in our motels and hotels in the.
So we only have one motel, which it probably will be available. Susan would have to, um, get with them. Brian Head has, has bought that, um, the resort. And, uh, so that would be.
Close it in November-ish, so it might be a good timing.
Yeah, so it might be a good time.
And they've been very good about working with us, the fair, as far as.
They've been good to work with the fair, so.
If you go to Ri- uh, and I'll, I'll use Richfield because that's the granddaddy, uh, jamboree in the state. Uh, if you go to Richfield and try to get a hotel room during the Richfield Jamboree, you're out of luck. You will have to go to another county. Even the local, uh, um, communities around Richfield, Joseph with their, their, uh, RV spot, Monroe now has an RV spot, uh, Camp RV Place, they, they get full.
Yeah.
So you fill every single thing for the whole entire length, so that.
Well, and Maria was concerned when I talked to her about it. She doesn't do events, but Susan does. But, um, she was concerned about, um, the time of year. Cedar City is so busy that time of year. By going to Parwin, I don't think we'll have that problem.
And the reason why we, we looked at several different dates, uh, there's a couple of rules that are unwritten with jamborees and OHV type events. First and biggest one is you don't put it on top of another rally or event. That's taboo. That's, uh, that's a quick, quick way to lose friends and not influence people. And then the second thing is you don't wanna do it when it's hot or when it's going to be raining all the time. Uh, August, we had the potential for, uh.
Monsoons.
Monsoon weather. And we still ran into a lot of mud. September, we are out of the monsoon, we hope. We could potentially have snow, but unlikely. About the cooler temperatures and the beginning of the fall colors. And so that will be a draw too. And this will be the last AT, organized ATV jamboree like this of the year. There are several other things throughout the year. There's a Tikaboo, uh, that they put on that's in November. And, uh, Sand Hollow and Coral Pink obviously.
To the south, yeah.
There are things privately, but a- as far as organized by a county or a tourism office or a city, this would be the last one. So, and people are hungry to go. Five hundred plus riders in, in Richfield, seven hundred plus riders in, uh, Hurricane. Beaver has.
We, we stay at two fifty.
They've capped at two fifty. They've self-capped. Panguich does about the same.
And we may want to do that. I don't know. We'll see how it works.
So for rides, the Forest Service and BLM have a limit on the number of machines on a ride. That's twenty-five machines. Guides and support don't count towards that number. So you could have twenty-five machines on one ride and three to five support machines. And on one ride, and if you do in five rides a day, if you get every ride filled. And each, and most machines are gonna be side-by-sides with more than one person. And if they're paying seventy dollars or so per person, you can do the math. If you're looking at two hundred.
So you do it per person, not per vehicle?
You count machine as far as BLM and Forest Service authorization to use the trails. But you count people for the registration.
So Susan, one thing that might be helpful is to reach out, you know Commissioner Bushman from Paiute, Darren? He works at Jorgensen's, I believe. He's, he's a.
Yes, I, he probably.
Very involved in that.
I'd actually encourage, well, he would be a good one, but I would also encourage you to reach out to the Beaver Tourism Office.
Right.
The Garfield Tourism Office and the new person that's over the Richfield Jamboree. I'd encourage you to reach out to them. I'd even encourage you to go to the jamboree. Now, the, the Paiute Jamboree is a little bit different. They don't charge for, uh, people to come, but they do charge for meals. They do charge for hats, shirts, and then to put in for the prizes. So, so that's where they make their money.
Is there a, is there a real time limit on this approval or?
There is. The, you want to get the word out as soon as possible. You'd want to tie the date down as soon as humanly possible. So that one time, uh, pre-COVID, when, uh, Hurricane was thinking about not doing it. There were other jamborees and other groups throughout the state that were kinda eyeballing that time in March to go. But Northern Utah, not great riding weather in March. And Eastern Utah, it might be a little bit iffy. Southern Utah, great time to ride, south of here, not here.
Yeah.
So, um, and then starting in pretty much, uh, May through August, or actually May through, uh, middle of September. You got jamborees going all the time. You've got people that are, that, the roadies.
That go to all of them, don't they?
To all of them. And then they bring their friends and they, and they, they bring their, those people bring their friends the next year.
Could we table this until the next meeting, until you have time to research this and talk to some of these other counties? And just give us, bring some more information. I would feel better about.
Yes, yes. Yeah, I was just gonna ask Maria to step in here. She's over at Tourism.
As far as we're concerned, we would be supportive of Susan and whatever we can do, but we are limited in what we can do in terms of our funds. Because of how we are set up in this county, um, we would have to spend the funds on the advertising aspect. So prizes and those kinds of things would not fall under our budget.
Advertising though.
You could advertise the event.
We can advertise the event and we can provide some support, some support services. I would also want to make sure that we clarify with the federal agencies as to whether or not they would waive those fees. Because every time I've asked for a permit, I've had to pay.
I was told intergovernment, intergovernment, they don't charge us fees.
Well.
That's what, that's what Mike was told.
We have a meeting with them today. Let's make sure.
Oh yeah. Oh yeah.
If we could finalize all this.
The county does the permitting.
Yeah.
The county does the permitting.
I would encourage you to please remind them that the Forest Service and the BLM get a lot of money from the state, well, formerly the state parks, but the OHV uh, program of which I'm a part of. And so they, they like to keep us happy, so.
Yeah.
Well, and if we have prizes that we're talking about and such, the one that we talked about, it was a triple. Triple S. And then you said that there was another.
DNP is the one that they said would support us.
I've got it in with DNP.
So do we.
And so I just have people that work there, so. But, so I think that probably.
And we, you can probably get some donated, right?
Uh, that's the other part where, uh, the county or the tourism also helps to, to ring up donations. Uh, as much as possible, you know, they're, they're talking to their vendors that they've used for other events. The, the OHV club can also be a part of that and talking to vendors. Uh, we've got experience through the, uh, Friends of the Paiute Banquet where we've got contacts, uh, that, and, uh, for, for donations, so. And as it is a tax exempt thing, those can be donated, donations under the tax exempt status, so.
Okay.
Well, I would move.
I would, I would suggest that, um, Susan and, and all of you maybe go back in a room with Mike and, and maybe get some more information in that.
A little, can I give you this, a little information about it?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Well, I'd move to table this for a couple of weeks till we can get a little more information. Is that, does that sound okay?
Yep. You want a second? Yep, you want to second that?
Yep, I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I do want one.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roddy.
It's great.
Okay, we will go on. Discussion of possible approval of vehicle sales on a public surplus webpage, Wade. You had to wait all that time. We need to get him back home to start changing oil and stuff.
And while he's doing that, I, I wonder if maybe we could change the process on this to make life a little bit easier for Wade?
Okay.
You know, a lot of the things that we do came because in years past, before anyone here worked here. There was some folks that played fast and loose with some of the county property. And I think where you've vested this responsibility with Wade, I would almost suggest that sales and transfers, if you're comfortable with it, I mean if you're not, that's fine, but be ratified so that he can do it and then come and explain, because he's gonna, he's gonna always try and get the best price. He's gonna always try and do what's best for the interdepartmental stuff. And there's always gonna be stuff to work out if you're going in between funds. And that doesn't change if it's before or after the fact, but it makes his, I don't know, I haven't even talked to Wade about this. He might not even agree with me.
Does this, does this make it difficult?
So the transfer was great and we kinda figured that out. And as far as this goes, I mean either way, I think you guys need to approve it anyway, just so it's on the record.
Yeah.
But whether it's before or after, I'm fine with that too, so.
You've been so busy, you haven't got ahead of it anyway, huh?
And maybe I, maybe I don't know. I just, it just seemed to me that, you know, I think, I think you can count on Wade always acting in the county's best interest. And that the fact that it's gonna come before the commission, either before approval or after for ratification.
Which we do that.
More of a procedural change, I thought, but anyway.
And does this, would this, I mean, does this ever hold you up? Like having to, you could maybe get this done a little sooner, but you've gotta get to commission first?
So it hasn't yet.
Okay.
Gets a little more efficient.
There's been one where we had to get ratified, we had to ask for forgiveness, and that was with the search and rescue, because we were, we were in a hurry to get some of that stuff done. So they could get these new snowmobiles and ready for the season. And there actually is a couple of on here that we're waiting on too, so.
So, so on that, on John's question there, I wonder if, if it would be, a quarterly report would be that you would receive a quarterly ratification vote. In other words, a report that would come every quarter. And then, then he can perform his business as he goes and provide a ratification, which will be the checks and balance.
And he has oversight. I mean, he works under the Public Works. Well, and same here, and I apologize to kinda jump in the middle of that, but I just, I thought, man, I wonder if we could make your life easier, but maybe it's, I don't know, maybe it's not that big of a deal.
Yeah, there's some situations where we're waiting, but as busy as they've been lately, a lot of these vehicles, it hasn't, hasn't quite held me up yet, so I still got a few sitting there, so.
I just listened to a message I got from a local dealer. He was saying he has access to half-ton trucks right now. I forwarded you the message, you can listen to it and call him. Is that what we buy is half tons usually?
Some of them are.
For the sheriff's department, a lot of them.
I just sent you the message. Maybe give him a call.
I will.
Good.
Thank you. So, these five vehicles here, just some that are coming from different departments, that we've got new vehicles for, so these are ready to go. And then we have the two snowmobiles for the search and rescue, which they're trying to upgrade all their, they've done that deal with dealership in Richfield, so that you guys are aware of already.
Yeah, yeah, those are good deals because they're able to buy them and then turn them over quickly and.
Plus they're doing the servicing on them during that whole time too.
Is that Spring Cross for Torres you're getting rid of? Did you call him and tell him?
You know, it'll hold a lot of bodies in the trunk. That's why I always teased him.
Oh dear.
I've actually replaced that one with a Toyota RAV4, so it's better gas mileage.
Any, any other?
Nope, that's it.
Kind of cut and dry, isn't it? We just need a motion on it?
Yep.
Okay.
I would move for approval of the vehicle sales on the public surplus website as presented by Wade and the documentation's been provided to the commission and the clerk.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks Wade.
Thanks Wade.
Discussion of possible approval of inter-local indemnification encroachment agreement between town of Canariville and Iron County.
This is what we did, we did with Eneek already and with the Iron County Water Conservancy. They've signed it now and, and we decided at that time to do them individually, one at a time. So, I think you were there Commissioner when they, the council approved the signature on their end, so we're good. That's all I have.
You good with the motion?
Yep.
To approve the inter-local indemnification encroachment agreement between town of Canariville and Iron County.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to Tan. Discussion of possible approval of memorandum of understanding between Robert K. Wiener with offices in Washington DC area and Iron County, a member of the Rural Public Lands County Council 2023. Are you gonna talk to this?
Can speak to that a little bit. So Robert Wiener is a lobbyist and Iron County has traditionally paid him a bit. Often not all that he asks for. And so I don't know if you guys are, how familiar with this you are or how, if you want us to kinda go back and try and see what we had paid in the past. Looks like he was asking for fifteen thousand for 2023.
Is that what we've done before?
Please come up to the microphone.
This is exactly the one I wanna have addresses right there.
Hi, I'm Bruce Washburn, I live in Cedar City. My question is, what is the?
Lobbying?
Well, not lobbying, but what is the organization that he's wanting us to join? Does it exist? Investigated that?
Rural Public Lands Council.
I suspect it's just Mr. Wiener.
Ah, they actually do.
I don't know.
Can I put Heath Hanson on the spot? He just walked in.
Did he?
Heath, can you come up here to the mic for a minute? Sorry to put you on the spot. So you can stay up here, sir. I just wanna have, Bruce, I wanna have Heathway. Robert Wiener, I've asked you about him before, about his lobby services, you know, he'll bill the counties for lobbying service. And I think he mostly deals with SRS and PILT, right? Seems like he's, and maybe you don't wanna say your opinion in public, I don't know, but I've talked to you about it before.
This is a representative for Mike Lee, by the way.
Yeah, Heath is with Mike Lee's office and, I mean, we have, we have our representatives there, Chris Stewart and Mike and others, and John Curtis and all of them. Do you, what's, what, what's your, you wanna state an opinion? Would you rather do it offline or?
You'd rather not do it publicly.
I get it, I get it.
Guys are always your best advocates from my perspective. You're your own best advocates, like if you have issues or anything, I prefer to work through you all, but.
Is Robert Wiener, is it his own, to Bruce's question, is it his own personal organization as a lobbyist or does he represent a, what's it called?
Rural Public Lands.
Rural Public Lands.
Is that kinda his organization that he's created? You don't, you're not familiar with it? Okay.
So this usually comes up during budget hearings and it didn't.
And that's because in 2021, I believe the commission voted to not pay this. If you would like, you know, we've got a minute, would you like me to go and do some research on this?
I, I'd rather, I'd rather maybe table it.
Okay.
Let's do that.
I had just a couple of things.
Sure.
What I was saying. I looked for that organization, I Googled it of course, and I got, there is, was something business registered in Virginia in 2006 that's listed as inactive.
Wow.
Open secrets, you know, you can find on anything about lobbyists there. And I don't know what he's doing now, but in the past, he's been bringing in around three or four hundred thousand. The past two years, it's over a million. So, and his first statement this year was a million four. So for fifteen thousand, I'm not sure how much personal attention you're gonna get. And I think working through our congressional delegation and county, association of counties and and the national association of counties are probably gonna be better lobbying efforts than.
Yeah, we've questioned this every year.
If my memory serves me correct, maybe it was before you were elected Marilyn, that we, we were not going to renew that contract. And then I think Commissioner Whitney from Beaver came over and lobbied us with Wiener, remember he took us, he took him and talked to us and talked about SRS and PILT and how important he was. But we were kinda on the fence then. I think we, I think we may have decided to go ahead and pay him. I don't think it was a whole amount, I think it was a portion of it.
Right. And I've met with him several times over the years on, on different issues, but it was yeah, I don't know, I don't, and the way we looked at it in the past was kind of a year to year thing, if there was an issue that we felt that he could be helpful with. But I, we didn't, usually it comes up during our budget discussions and it just didn't this time.
Well, and I, I apologize, with our week last week, I wanted to maybe visit with you individually, not as a quorum, and kind of have this discussion offline. And, because I, I wasn't sure whether we should even have it on the agenda, frankly.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I would be, you, we have the same concerns that you do and have, and have had concerns over the years that we've tried to address.
Another county in Colorado.
I know we have to fight constantly for the public lands. We constantly, we have to be vigilant to that. Yes, absolutely. Our, our representatives have been very good about working with those issues. But I don't know if we get extra from this, I, I just don't know.
Heath, do you feel, just, I'm gonna put you on the spot again, Heath, thanks Bruce, but do you feel like our representation with Mike and Chris and Burgess and John? Do you believe, do you believe that's top of mind awareness? Do you believe they're fighting all the time for that issue without? And it's top of mind all the time for them, right? They're, okay. All right, well.
Maybe we could.
I think we need to.
Research it a little more for us.
I think we need to do some more, I think we need to do a little more due diligence.
I do too.
Among us to.
And I would suggest that you all visit with some of your counterparts as well. I know commissions in the past have had strong opinions both ways on this particular topic.
I wish I would've realized that. I talked to all of them last week about other issues.
And I saw this on the agenda and I should've called you, but I, and I wasn't sure.
But we're gonna be down to UAC this next week and we may be able to, this week, and we'll be able to talk to them about it.
Is that a motion, Mike?
Yeah, that's a motion. Motion to table.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Right.
We'll table.
Sorry to put you on the spot, Heath. You walked in just the right time.
I'm sorry.
Discussion of possible approval of Utah Office of Tourism.
He's the South Utah Director.
Co-op Marketing Grant. Maria, here she had to sit there all that time too.
That's all right. So every year, we put in for a grant with the Utah Office of Tourism. We actually do this in cooperation with Bryanhead Resort, Bryanhead Town, and the county. And the purpose of this grant is to be matched by the state of Utah with funds to market Bryanhead winter product to the Southern California and Las Vegas markets. So it does have to be spent outside of the state of Utah. That is one of the requirements. We have been approved for the Utah Office of Tourism, a hundred and eighty-two thousand and four hundred dollars. And with the match between the county, so the county will put in, the tourism of the county will put in seventy thousand dollars. Bryanhead Resort will put in a hundred thousand dollars and Bryanhead Town will put in twenty-two thousand dollars for a total of three hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred dollars for.
I'm sorry, Maria, will you just, I didn't quite get those numbers.
So the total is three hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred. The partners are one hundred thousand from Bryanhead Resort, seventy thousand from Iron County.
Okay.
Twenty-two thousand from Bryanhead Town. And a hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred dollars from the state of Utah through the grant.
TRT and TRCC or?
No, this is just through the TRT.
The grant.
Just TRT.
TRT only.
TRT only.
Perfect, thank you. I didn't, I almost kept up with you.
Well, I talk fast.
Well, you're, yeah.
You do.
It's okay.
I can't help it.
Here all day, so.
I've got a lot of things to do, just like you guys.
Some of us got long-winded and don't have any room to judge.
Anyways, I am hoping that today you would approve this grant so that we can move forward. As you know, Bryanhead Resort was the first resort to open this season, which is a big deal. It's been, really, it's a huge deal for us all, so. Last year, they had over two hundred and thirty thousand skier days. So, and we attribute a lot of that to this marketing cooperative program, so.
What states do you advertise in?
So Las Vegas and Southern California and a little bit in Arizona, and we have done some outreach to Texas.
Do they do much? They have a ski resort at Mount Charleston, right?
Yes, they do.
Do they do much?
It's not like Bryanhead.
It's not like Bryanhead.
Right, I knew that, I just didn't know what they do. And then what about Southern California? Do they have many resorts down there?
They have many resorts. In fact, that's who we actually compete against. We don't compete against Northern Utah, we compete against Southern California. So, and so in order for us to have any kind of, you know, top of mind awareness, you have to spend the dollars and California is extremely expensive. So like we're competing against Mammoth, Big Bear, all of that, which are kind of local, I guess you could say, they're closer. But they don't have Utah snow, so, and Utah snow is really, is amazing. It is the best, so anyways. So we appreciate this partnership. It's been a good one and we've been doing this for the last six years. And we just wanna continue with it.
I'll ask for a motion then.
I'll move to approve the Utah Office of Tourism Co-op Marketing Grant as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank Maria.
Hey Maria. Will you text me the name we're considering for restaurant board?
Oh.
Is that still?
Yes, Julie Pedilia. I'll get, I'll text you.
Text it to me.
Can you, are you gonna go over and visit with those folks too? You're good? Okay, all right. Okay, so we've got Brett here. Should we go in closed session?
Yeah, and I think, I mean, you have things to discuss, but I don't think you have that many.
So should we?
Because the other option is to move it to the end of the meeting.
Should we do it now then? Not. What are you thinking?
I'd say we move it to the end, or we could just deal with it, I don't know.
And you, I mean, you don't, well, it's up to you whether you wanna go into closed session.
Brett's here, so should we go ahead with it?
Sure.
Do you want me to move, or do you want me to move for closed session? What's the?
What do we got coming up at that time?
What do we got left? A bunch.
And I guess the other thing is, is, you know, and maybe Sam could speak to this, but you know, the purpose of a closed session is to discuss, you know, commercial details of a sale that might affect the outcome of the sale, and I think there is a version of this where Bryanhead isn't the seller and Iron County isn't the buyer. And so I'm not telling you to air your dirty laundry, I'm just saying you could just not do a closed session if you chose.
Yeah.
You know, because normally if you, if you have like private buyers or something, that's a different.
It's different, yeah. It's different. Yeah.
But I also don't wanna, I don't wanna put you in a position where, I'm gonna stop talking.
What do you think, Sam? Think we oughta go ahead?
It's up to you.
I'm, I'm good not going into closed session.
I am too.
Okay.
All right, let's go ahead. Uh, discussion of possible approval of Bryanhead Town to purchase one point five acre of land from Iron County in Bryanhead. So.
I wonder, would you like to have Brett maybe stand up and address it?
Yeah, let's, let's have him address that, Brett.
Maybe tell us where it is. Maybe you could pull it up on the map and, or on the screen real quick and show us all where it is and.
Yeah, I don't think we had, did we have that in the, I don't think we had that in the packet either, did we? Oh, yeah. Oh.
Can you just?
There's not a, yeah, there is maps actually with the.
Yeah, I think I might have attached a, a map with the.
With the appraisal, we do have a map.
With the description.
Mm-hmm.
Right, grab me and Brett.
He's right there. Yep.
Can you talk, Brett, can you talk about the his-
The one right here?
Yeah, you bet.
History of this and kind of what happened, that somebody was maybe gonna donate this years ago and it fell through the, all that stuff. Would you bring all that up?
So, um.
It's that funky little piece that goes skinny and, and goes out further.
All right. Uh, so this area is what we refer to as the Meadow in Bryanhead, which is silly, cause there's lots of meadows in Bryanhead, but this is the Meadow, capital T, capital M, okay? And, uh, people feel strongly about the Meadow.
Share, huh?
And, uh, so, what's that?
It's like share.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I'll stop.
So, uh, anyway, at one point in time, so you see, uh, Village Way kinda runs parallel to the highway there. And the Meadow would be what to the, I read right, wheat, to the west of it. See, I always.
Be west.
West.
West of it and then, uh, to the east of it, you're starting to climb the, the ski hills basically. Um, so the area to the left or, or to the east, yeah, west, we're calling the Meadow and the area to the east, we're calling the Village Core. Um, and they're zoned that way, so the Meadow is zoned as, as, uh, conservation open space. And, uh, the, um, Village Core is zoned Village Core, which is a very dense sort of, it's a, uh, commercial. It's intended to be like, um, walkable, like pedestrian oriented, commercial, um, area. So on one side of the street, we want pedestrian commercial. On the other side of the street, we just want open space. All right, uh, many moons ago, nineteen seventy-nine, um, which just for those keeping track at home is the year before I was born. In nineteen seventy-nine, apparently.
You look fairly young.
We're told the, uh, thank you, uh, the, uh, the, um, town was working with, uh, some developers, potential developers in there, um, on, on a development agreement. Um, the landowner, there were two landowners in there, as far as I can tell. The main one was called Overzichi. Um, I think I'm saying that right, and that was some sort of a foreign company. I don't know if that was the name of a person as well, but, uh, um, it was at least the name of a foreign company that owned a bunch of land in there. The other one was, I can't believe I'm forgetting the name of the other one, but there was another one. Um, Overzichi and, golly, I can't believe I don't remember. Anyway, Overzichi was kind of the main one in there. They were, they owned, um, they owned most of the land, uh, both up the hill and down in the, in the, um, Meadow. The road wasn't there yet. Now, they were looking to sell land to a developer of what they called the Mall. And we still call it the Mall. That one's actually survived, but the mall that they called at the time was not the same as, as what we call the Mall now. The Mall at the time, uh, included Bryanhead Sports that his cursor was bouncing over just a second ago, as well as the Mall right next door with White Roof, and then those two properties to the north. All that was called the Mall Development. Now, at the time, the development agreement was going to give land to the town, both where the road is now, Village Way, and the land out in the Meadow to preserve its open space. And in return, the Mall developers who were buying land from Overzichi were going to get certain entitlement to density of development and, uh, in theory have, have, uh, be able to have their parking in the, in the Village Way roadway. Okay. We have not found a copy of this development agreement and, uh, what we found is a letter from the, I don't, I, I think from Overzichi to a title company saying, hold this title in, in escrow or something. I don't know all these words, but in escrow, I think until the town lives up to its, um, you know, until both parties live up to their, to their sides of the agreement. It appears that the whole area became financially distressed, right? Not too long after that, uh, the town doesn't have a signed agreement anywhere. It's, it's not clear that we ever signed an agreement. We were just kind of working on it in theory and then the situation changed. Okay, so we did a title report of the area because, uh, the people who currently own what we now call the Mall, which is just the one building, um, are, you know, claiming that they have, uh, rights to that nineteen seventy-nine development agreement that there's no copy of. And, uh, and so they, they want to build another building. We want them to build the parking along with it. And they're saying, well, I guess what it results in, they're saying they're entitled to do the parking in the right of way. And we're like, well, we can work on a development agreement about that. And they're like, we already have a development agreement from nineteen seventy-nine and yada, yada. And that's evidenced by the fact that the town has.
They haven't given that to you?
Right, they don't have a copy of it, uh, but, uh, but they, uh, claim that it exists. And they claim that it exists by, by evidence of the fact that we own the land that's in the Meadow. We had, which we own part of. But in the original agreement, it was all supposed to come to us. Anyway, I'm giving you the long version, mostly cause it's fascinating.
Is, originally you believed that was supposed to come to Bryanhead.
Yeah, that was supposed to be part of that development agreement at some point in time. I don't know that, that, we're working on a new development agreement with them regardless, because what happened was we did a title report and found out that, okay, the, the two chunks to the further east, west in the Meadow, we do own, we, we acquired in subsequent transactions. The, the strip of land that the county now owns and the, and Village Way were, at one point in time, one chunk of land. And in nineteen eighty-six, it appears that Overzichi ceased to exist and stopped paying taxes and that the county took that as, uh, part of their, just for taxes. But instead of taking the whole thing and the road, they looked at it and said, well, that's a road, so we're not taking, you know? And they drew out a, a legal description of just that funky strip, as you called it, you know, that we see now. And according to the title report, the dang road still belongs to Overzichi, who doesn't exist. So we intend to exercise quiet title, um, and, and take ownership of the road, which is as it should be. Uh, we'd like to consolidate everything in there so that we have the, the opportunity to do with that road what needs to be done and be able to put the parking in the road, um, which we need a few more feet of, of, uh, right of way in order to get a center lane of parking and actually expand the parking in the road in anticipation of, of future development.
So that's what you need that piece for, is to expand the road so you can add, be like parallel or like angle, angle parking.
Angle parking in the middle of the road. So that's, that's, that's kind of the master plan there. Um, I, I came and pitched it several months ago and, and, you know, we eventually got around to.
Getting back to it.
Yeah, yeah. And so, and so, you know, what I heard from the commission was, um, was, hey, you know, we'll feel, feel more comfortable if you buy that from us rather than trying to do some kind of horse trading or anything like that. Made sense to me.
Really have anything to trade.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, that was the thing.
Tried to look at that.
We were looking around at a few properties. There wasn't really anything that made sense. And so, to us, it makes more sense to just buy it. So I had an appraisal done. Appraisal came in at eight thousand and that's what I'm offering. Uh, that's what the council asked me to offer to you guys, so that's what we're doing here.
That seemed to me quite low, but, I mean, and we were, you know, we know that it makes sense that you own that. So I just, um, talked to Karsten, our appraiser, to see what he, his thoughts of that was. So can we have Karsten come up and maybe visit with the, with us about that?
So, yeah, in reviewing that appraisal report, Cody did it and he's really a, a great appraiser, MAI appraiser, has all the correct designations except, uh, the use that he didn't express in the report was parking. So.
He kind of left that out.
He left, well, it just wasn't, you know, it wasn't part of the report because the current issue with the property is, it, it has, um, a, uh, it's a special zoning that restricts its use, but the actual intended use for the property is to expand the road and, and for parking. And so that would actually change the value of uses of value, of, uh, use and value are tied together. If you can use something to, for a specific purpose, residential use, so on and so forth. That would measurably change the value of something if you can use it for a different purpose, which is the intended use of the city. I'm not trying to stir the pot here. Just telling you what the facts are. I think, um, I think in that context, if that use was evaluated differently or if there, if the appraisal was a proposed appraisal with the intention of what they want to do, then, then that may change things a little bit differently. One interesting thing to note though is that in that report, there is the Scott Byrd, uh, purchase that is used as a comparable. So that's a point one-one acre lot in Cedar City that is, that the city also, Cedar City sold to, uh, um, it was a city-owned property and they sold to a private entity. And that property, the city has all these restrictions against development. They didn't allow anything for that property except parking. Uh, and that, that lot, which looks to be a really good comparable, sold for just two thousand dollars. So point one-one acres of usable space for two thousand dollars. And I think that, you know, one sale doesn't make a market, but that probably is a good context for.
Was that the rate at which Cody applied for the, applied?
No, he used some other comparables.
Brian, do you wanna get up here and?
I'm just curious if that was a direct, you know, comparable, cause this is a one point four-nine for eight thousand.
Zoned differently in, in a different type of location, but the same use was applicable in that, in that regard. But Brian had just a comment.
Well, the only thing I noticed in the appraisal report is when he did it, and this is kind of key on the types of comparables you use, is he just said that the property should be remained as unusable and, uh, as conservationist and stuff like that. And so when you use a highest and best use like that, then he uses comps that are comparable to that, that you can't use that are unusable and stuff like that. And so if they were to change the use to more of a, um, parking structure or something like that, or parking area and road expansion, then you would wanna look for comparables that were similar to that. Couple of the comparables he used were like forty acres. And I understand it's hard to find limited use type of cell.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah.
Typically why he used those larger pieces, but if you could find some that were maintained or changed over into a parking area or something like that, that would be something that would be more, well, it would be a lot better to, to evaluate for the estimated value.
With regards to that purpose, I, I don't think that Cody's report is inaccurate. I wanna state that for the record.
Yeah.
But, um, but I think in the context of these, of what we just expressed, then there's maybe a little bit of negotiation that could be had rather than just a hard and fast eight thousand.
And I wonder too, how much, how much would go to the road and would, would you be consolidating the other Bennett Meadow pieces?
That's, um, exactly what I was about to get up and say. When, when I say we're gonna use, the, the, acquiring the strip will enable us to do the parking project that we want to do. The parking project's gonna happen in the, in the existing roadway Village Way.
Anyway.
Um, no, that's where the parking's gonna happen. Um, as you see, there's, there's actually an OHV trail that already exists on the property.
Oh, that is on that property?
Do you see that OHV trail right there?
Oh, yeah.
So we'd be talking about two or three feet, you know, bumping walls over in spots where I'm pinched. I need a hundred and four feet and in some spots I have a hundred and two feet and this sort of thing. So we're talking about moving rock walls like two feet, um, further up where the, uh, right, in that stretch right there, uh, we'd probably be talking about moving the, 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 um.
OHV.
OHV trail about halfway, you know, maybe straddling that line sort of thing. Uh, but all the parking would actually happen in the, so there may be some lot line, you know, some line adjustments, some right of way line adjustments and that sort of thing. And then we would go ahead and consolidate all the rest of it together as the Meadow.
So technically, most of it would be conservation easement.
Yeah, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have a single vehicle parked on that piece of property.
Not actually parking.
Can I ask, you already own the roadway, correct?
We don't. We, we need to exercise quiet title on the roadway. Cause somebody that doesn't exist anymore owns it.
You do need to do that, right?
Are we working on that process?
But you own the, you own the pieces on the west.
So that, you're not gonna park on that actual piece?
No.
That.
No, I mean, we're.
High shaped piece.
I mean, at most, we're gonna, we're gonna bump a little bit of the, of the OHV trail over on there. I don't know that, that, I think OHV trails are contemplated in, in conservation open space, or trails anyway are contemplated in, uh, conservation open space, so.
Nicole, would this, would the eight thousand cover us as a county on taxes, past taxes and interest and all that?
When it went to tax sales, taxes have been paid and something, but it's been owned by Iron County.
So it has.
So we're not out much, right, on this piece?
For, for thirty years? Was it ninety-two when, when it changed Brett? When the tax sale happened?
Eighty.
Eighty-six, so thirty-seven, thirty-six years.
When Brett first approached me about this and I started looking, I talked to Sam, um, and we talked about trading. That might be the slickest thing to do is trade some property. We really couldn't find anything we wanted to trade. And, and then I asked Sam, can we just give it to him? Government, government, just give it to him to use, um. And that's when you said it might be best to get an appraisal just to, just to cover us and, and that's what we've done. And I mean, I, and maybe it's a low, but I've.
I just felt like for the taxpayers, we had to do something and, and, you know, and then I just, it, it seemed low, but now, you know, with what Karsten has said, I, I think we're probably okay.
I just, just to reiterate, I think Cody did a, a fine job. I don't have any issue with the actual eight thousand. I was just bringing up those points after reviewing the report.
Well, thanks. So, but, I mean, basically I'm good with it.
Yeah.
I, I would have almost been prepared to just give it to you. I mean, is my vote would be just to give it to you to use, but, um, I, you know, based on the appraisal we got and I think it's, that's, that would be.
I, I think that covers us as far as, you know, the taxpayers, you know, where we didn't trade anything or.
And just for the record, um, Cody, he associated with Bryanhead or the county in any way specifically, or would you call him an independent?
I think he's an independent, isn't he, Karsten? Yeah.
So he has been retained by the county during Board of Equalizations as a hearing officer, but he's a completely independent via appraiser.
On this one?
Yeah. I just wanted to make that clear that he's not tied to either party as, as part of this. And so in your decision-making, we're relying on the appraisal as a third party.
Well, ask for a motion then.
I'll, I'll go ahead and move to, um, sell the, the piece, the one and a half acres of land that Iron County owns in Bryanhead. Uh, APN number A dash one-one-five-zero dash zero-zero-zero-one dash zero-zero-zero-zero to Bryanhead for the appraised amount of eight thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Okay, that kind of took us a minute, but.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks.
Thanks, you guys.
Oh, maybe it was a wrong number. Okay, I think we will go on and convene as the Iron County Community Development and Rural, um, Agency. Number thirteen, consider cost reimbursement agreement between Iron County Community Development and Renewal Agency and Iron Apex Holdings LLC for the creation of the community reinvestment project area for the development of a large office, warehouse, manufacturing and distribution, uh, facility. Danny Stewart didn't leave. I think maybe he left us. He sat here for a long time.
He can't be far.
Do you know? Okay.
Brett brought up the fact that there was a, there may have been a discrepancy in the, in the account number on the motion. I'm gonna go verify that with Carrie real quick.
Okay, well, we need to make a new.
Maybe I can speak to this and then. That way you can.
Go on? Okay.
The text had called Danny. Hey, could you do me a favor? In, uh, our meeting, we've had this discussion about, um, there's a piece of land just to the west of the Mall. Hey, could you do me a favor? In, uh, our meeting, we've had this discussion about, um, there's a piece of land just to the west of the mall. Can you verify, maybe just text me the account and serial number on that? Just make sure we did our motion right? Okay, thanks. Okay, bye. Oh, okay.
Danny, are you still here?
Yeah, I read through that.
Where, will we just convene as the, as the Development and Renewal Agency? So if you can run up, that'd be great. You, you, okay, all right. Okay, thanks. I'll be right up.
I guess we could approve Jennifer's stuff. No? Or should we wait just a second?
Well, we'd have to un-convene.
Yeah, we would have to reconvene.
He said it'd be in ten seconds.
Okay.
He waited for two hours and when he finally got up, then we-
You have a sticky note. I can tear up a piece, piece of paper? There I go. I got something.
Is that a problem?
Hey, Jen?
I got, I gotta just tear off pieces.
Who was you thinking? What I was wondering if you did your trucks, if, if you did your cooking trailers and just give them a-
What they want is they want, they want it inside because they worry about the weather and stuff. And I said, that's fine.
Well, if you go in and eat, whatever.
But no, they'll come in, it'll be one of my foods.
That's Puyott County Commissioner. He'd be good to talk to. He'd be good to talk to.
Oh, we got, okay, very good. Okay, I'll call you later. Okay. Hey, Danny.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Sorry to lose my window there.
You're okay. We kind of went long on a few things today.
That's just fine. You've been sitting longer than I have, so. The item that I have on the agenda today is, uh, to consider a cost reimbursement agreement between the county and, uh, well, between the, uh, Community Development Renewal Agency and the developer of the Commerce Crossroads, uh, Logistics Park. And I'm looking up their name here. It's, uh, BZI, but the, the entity that this agreement would, would be is, uh-
Is it, or?
It's, uh, let's see, Iron Apex Holdings is the name of the company that would be the entity on the agreement. So this is similar to what we've done in the past with, uh, um, incentives for solar projects. Uh, the folks at Commerce Crossroads are looking at doing a project area, considering, uh, possibility for, uh, potential property tax incentives, similar to what we do with solar. To get the ball rolling on that, the first thing that we do is a cost reimbursement agreement, where the company pays the county to cover the legal fees associated with the creation of the project area and moving all of the documentation and everything forward as we've done in the past. So, any questions?
That's just-
I don't have any details as far as what these might be. This is just starting that process.
And as a reminder, this is the same as with solar projects where they actually pay the agency and then the, the agency attorney, Adam Long, helps them through that process. Am I speaking out of turn there?
No, that's exactly right. So, yeah, with this agreement, they would pay us. We would have those funds to pay the legal. And if there's any overs or unders, that's all addressed in, in the agreement here.
I'll call for a motion then.
I'll move for approval of the reimbursement agreement between Iron County Community Development Renewal Agency and Iron Apex Holding LLC for the creation of a community investment, community reinvestment project area for the development of a large office warehousing, manufacturing and distribution facility.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Danny.
Go to fourteen. Oh, we need to reconvene as the Iron County Commission. Uh, fourteen, resolution twenty-twenty-two dash thirteen, a resolution requesting ratification of the Iron County Justice Court. We need to do these separately. Okay.
So with the recert of the Iron County Justice Court, there's certain requirements. Uh, Chad drafted a letter for the Commissioner's review. Uh, it basically states that part of recertification for the Justice Court, uh, there needs to be an opinion letter from the county attorney, a resolution passed by this commission and an executed court certification affidavit submitted by the presiding judge of the Iron County Justice Court. Um, he asks that you accept this letter as his opinion that the Justice Court in and for Iron County, uh, with, uh, Judge Margaret Miller currently presiding meets all the requirements for the operation of a Justice Court and further meets all feasibility requirements to maintain said court. Um, if you'd like to review this letter as well as the court certification affidavit signed by Judge Miller, um, all that remains to continue having our Justice Court, uh, operate in its normal capacity would be to pass this resolution, which, uh, uh, I would encourage you to do.
Okay, all right. Probably take a motion then.
I'll move that we pass resolution twenty-twenty-two dash one-three, a resolution requesting recertification there in County Justice Court.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go to fifteen, resolution twenty-twenty-two dash fourteen, a resolution implementing a temporary judge in the absence of a judge beginning January twenty-twenty-three.
All right, thank you. So I spoke about this a little bit last commission meeting when Judge Dunlap was approved to have the formal document now, um, for your consideration. Um, resolution twenty-twenty-two fourteen will put into place an order allowing the Iron County Justice Court to retain services of a temporary senior court judge currently holding office within the Fifth District Court or an adjacent county, including Beaver, Garfield, Kane or Washington, to fill in during, um, conflicts of interest or unavailability of the permanent Justice Court judge, which will be effective on one-one of twenty-twenty-three.
Well, we had the two and now we're going to go to one, so just in case we need one to fill in.
Yes.
Right? Yeah, ask for a motion.
Move for approval of resolution twenty-twenty-two dash one-four, a resolution implementing a temporary judge in the absence of a judge beginning January twenty-twenty-three.
Second. Moved in seconded, all in favor? Aye. Great. Now Jennifer, back to Jennifer for personnel.
Really quick and go through all of them if you'd like. So, um, Sheriff's Office Corrections Clayton Mitchell has completed all requirements for promotion from a full-time metal, medical techni- technician deputy one to a full-time medical technician deputy two effective November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Christian Kane was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and selection process to backfill the vacant full-time deputy one effective eleven-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two. In the Council on Aging Department, Steve Smith was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and selection process to backfill the part-time heroin driver effective October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. In the Attorney's Office, Trajan Evans has completed all requirements for promotion from a full-time PIO deputy three to a full-time PIO deputy four effective November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two. And in the Justice Court, Kaylee Morris was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and selection process to backfill the full-time Justice Court clerk effective November, November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll move to approve, um, a gen item sixteen, A through D, as outlined by Jennifer Bradbury.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, take care of that. Do you want to do your board?
Yep, I have a, I have a, uh, a position on the Iron County Restaurant Tax Board, uh, that was vacated by Dolly Warren for, uh, she retired. Uh, the proposed new appointment to that board is Julie Padilla, uh, who oversees the food and beverage service at Courtyard Marriott, which is one of the requirements to be on that board is you actually have to be serving in the restaurant industry. Uh, so she, her name was, was brought forward and she has accepted, uh, the position. Uh, her name is Julie. So I would move that Julie Padilla, uh, be named to the Iron County, uh, Restaurant Tax Board.
I'll second that.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, any other?
Yes, um, Danny Stewart has a couple to present to you.
Thank you. This is concerning the Economic Development Advisory Board. I sent an attachment, but it was late. I don't know if you received it. Did you?
I, in fact, I just gave them. I have one copy that I gave them.
Okay, I've got some others if-
Wonder if I can, oh, it's right here. Yep, it made it in.
You got it up there?
So we're, we're looking at just a few changes on the Economic Development Advisory Board. First of all, the, by state statute, they've changed the name of this from the County Economic Development Advisory Board to the County Economic Opportunity Advisory Board. So it went from the CED Committee to the CEO Committee. It sounds much more important.
What is it? Economic Opportunity?
Uh-huh, County Economic Opportunity Advisory Board. First item on here, we had Mayor Clayton Callaway from Brianhead serving as a member of the committee. His term ended. He did not, uh, request to be, um, to, to do a second term as is, uh, allowed. But he requested that Brett Hauser, um, replace him and, and do another two-year term as a member of this board. Brett was at our last meeting in Clayton's place and he agreed to, to fill that. So that's the first change. Uh, the other, Craig Isom was appointed to the member of the board as the director of the, what was then called the SUU Business, uh, the BRC. And the BRC no longer exists. Now it's the Small Business Development Center instead of the Business Resource Center. The director of the BRC, of the, uh, Small Business Development Center is Joni Anderson. Uh, the way that we had that written up for this board is that the director of that center would be a member of that board. So we've invited Joni Anderson to, to take that place and she's agreed. Craig Isom still has two years left on a four-year term. But we're requesting that we swap his position from that director position to an individual with experience or expertise in economic development matters as chosen by the Iron County Commission. So that is who we're recommending. So Brett Hauser, Craig Isom, Joni Anderson, to be approved as board members, as, as I've explained. Um, we've also had, um, Stephen Lizenby serving as the chair of this board. Uh, his schedule has been much busier now that he's affiliated not only with SUU, but also with, uh, the Governor's Office. So, um, we would like to recommend that Scott Levitt from Southwest Tech serve as the chair of the board, that Joni Anderson serve as the vice chair of the board. We meet quarterly. This board is responsible for, uh, recommending the rural county grant, uh, as well as they will be helping, um, review applications for our Iron County Small Business Grant.
Okay, I guess we can call for a motion.
I'll, uh, I'll do that while Pablo's nose affects, all right?
Plenty of time.
Uh, I, I would, I would move to approve with the Iron County Economic Opportunity Advisory Board. Uh, Joni Anderson, uh, the SBDC director proposes the new vice chair, Scott Levitt, as the chair, Southwest Technical College. So Craig Isom to be, uh, moved from his director role to an individual with experience or expertise in economic development matters in Iron County. Uh, Stephen Lizenby to give up his chair position and also be on the committee under that heading. Uh, Brett Hauser to be appointed to the committee, uh, as the Brianhead Town Manager, excusing Clayton Callaway from that position. Does that cover it?
Wow.
Following that meeting, you, you did better than I did. Thank you.
You was a good one to do that one.
I'll second that.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Okay, anything else that anybody has?
I thought I heard the chair say something earlier that if you brought a dozen donuts next time, you could, she'd move you up on the list. Yes, she did really say that. It's easy.
I didn't because I can't eat donuts, so I would say something else, but-
Sorry to keep you waiting so long.
I'd go for, uh, sandwich waffle from the Waffle House over in Perwin. It's very good. Anyway, um, I guess we'll adjourn.